Five thirty-two P M. I will go ahead and call the City of Bellevue Idaho Common Council meeting to order. Uh, it's Monday, August eleventh, one twenty-five, and five thirty-two P M. Um, just a reminder to please turn off all cell phones put on you except for emergency personnel. Anya, will you go ahead and do?
Mayor Jordani.
Yes.
Council President Shay.
President.
Council Member Bergen.
Rosen.
Council Member Reed. Your Council Member Davis. Council Member Mahoney.
Here.
Council Member Open up.
Hey. Awesome. Thank you. Notice of agenda compliance for Idaho Code seventy-four down two zero four, finding that the regular meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho Code. Seventy-four dash two zero four within forty-eight hours prior to the meeting at the City of Bellevue City Hall, post office and on the city's web website on August seventh, twenty twenty-five.
I'll move that the notice for tonight's meeting was posted in accordance with Idaho Code seventy-four two oh four.
Second. All in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Item two, call for conflict. Any conflict with tonight's agenda as outlined in Idaho Code seventy-four dash four zero four.
I have none, Mayor.
None.
Moving on to the Mayor and Council report, item three, um, I'll start us off. Uh, one thing of note that's happening this week that, um, I haven't seen a ton of publication about, but I want to make sure that we're communicating about it is, uh, the USS Idaho, uh, Commissioning Committee has brought in, um, the Victory Bells from the National Museum of New Orleans, and they are opening up, I was in the newsletter, I can share the poster with you, Tony, so you know about this.
Victory.
Uh, the Victory Bells, yes. They are, um, performing, um, up in Ketchum, and then they are also opening for the performer at Haley Rocks, uh, this Thursday. So, uh, just something exciting, um, learn a little bit more about what the USS Idaho, uh, Commissioning is, uh, and go see a really, really, really cool historic style performance, um, that I just feel like we're lucky when groups bring in things like that in Fort Valley.
Very lucky.
Um, I just like, uh, would love to help promote that more because I don't think it's been promoted enough across the valley. Um, something important that the chief put together some information for us is wildfire preparedness, it's been very dry and hot, so just a reminder to our community, um, that information went out in our newsletter, um, and we're also having to provide that information, um, in any other way that anyone would like to receive it. Um, so thank you, Chief, for putting that out there. We are continuing at full steam ahead with the, uh, the Mahonies, of course, on our Labor Day celebration. Um, and I'd encourage any event local businesses who want to participate in the parade. Um, are you guys pretty, pretty good on vendors for?
Oh, we had one applicant today, and otherwise they're pretty full.
Okay, great.
But you, uh, we'll keep that in mind.
Okay.
I mean, it, it depends. If it's ten taco facts, no, it's gotta be something different.
Um, so we, um, would encourage you all to, uh, participate in any way you can if that's the greater, just joining in on the festivities as they, um, come through, and I would love to just kind of check in with council on any updates you all might have. My name is Sir.
Yep. And you mentioned, um, our water usage, and, um, try to limit your zones to ten minutes, and, um, we are going through a ton of water. Please limit your, um, zones to ten minutes per zone. Your grass must stay green, that's my promise.
So, in, in terms of watering with your on air water, irrigation systems, our Public Works Director, this was in the newsletter as well, um, just in an effort to conserve water during these hot times, these watering seasons, try and limit your zone to ten minutes per zone, um, on your automated watering systems, irrigation systems. Thank you. Anything from council for that?
I don't have anything at this point, Mayor.
Okay.
Or do I?
Yeah. Wonderful. Um, I will go ahead and move on to item four, public comment. This is for items of concern, not on the agenda. If there's anyone in City Hall or on Zoom who would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand.
I would like to make a public comment. I'm, I'm on Zoom.
Perfect. I see. Please state your name and your address for the record and keep your, um, comments, uh, to three minutes.
Okay, um, Judy Zimmer, one oh nine South Third Street here in Bellevue. And I have some questions on city ordinances that I don't seem to be getting answers on. Um, mainly about my neighbors. They, uh, there's an RV that is right on my property line, and it's only six feet away from my bedroom window, and it's been occupied continuously for three years. The RV is hooked up to the water and sewer, and so, um, my questions are, is it against city ordinances to hook an RV up to the city sewer? Are they paying for the hookup? Um, is that in compliance with city code? These are questions I can't seem to get an answer to. Um, I know there is an ordinance that people can only stay in an RV on the property for twenty-one days at a time. They've continuously lived in it for three years. Um, you know, it seems reasonable to me that they shouldn't be allowed to do that, and especially right on the property line. What about setbacks? I've asked these questions, not seem to get any answers. Um, I have had to give, uh, call in noise complaints. Um, not recently, but they, you know, will party till like two o'clock in the morning, and like I said, they're like six feet from my bedroom window. So the cops came, and the cop that responded to the complaint told me to send an email to Kurt Gaston because he knows all the city ordinances and he'd be able to answer my questions. So I did that. I never received a response. Um, Brian Parker is also aware of this situation, and he did send a letter to the owner of the property. And I don't know what the letter said. He never told me what he said in the letter, but the owner of the property came to my door and apologized for the fact that there were so many people living in this single-family home. I mean, there could be a dozen cars parked there at any one time. So he, um, apologized to me. He went around to the neighbors and apologized, and he told me that the people in the RV would be moving. Well, they're still there. And so I want to know, what can I do about this? I want you guys all to imagine yourself living next door to this and help me resolve this situation, or, 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 you know, is there nothing I can do about it? Those are my questions.
Well, thank you, Judy. I wrote down notes from your, um, public comment, and I will follow up with Brian Parker and Kurt Gaston, and we will get back to you. Thank you for your comment.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment on Zoom or City Hall?
Uh, Greg Beaver, one thirteen South Seventh Street. So I drove by the school twice today, then their sprinklers were on. So, I don't know. During the day, there's no school. Um, just since you pointed that out. That's all I have.
Thank you for your comment, Greg. Um, our Public Works Director will follow up on that. Without seeing any more hands in City Hall and nothing on Zoom, I will move to close public comment and move on to item five. This is our consent agenda. Um, council, if anyone has any questions or consent agenda, now would be into the discuss.
Uh, I would like to get an update on where we are with the water metering and any information that's available around it.
Uh, so at this time, I have, uh, six hundred, I have all the numbers listed. I want to say I have around six hundred and eighty. So we have a hundred and twenty water connections that refer to, we have accounts for. Of that, we have six hundred and twenty that we have verified and, um, confirmed that the address and the water meters match those addresses. Right now, I have my team, um, verifying the other two hundred and eighty. So I know, let's see if we have meters on the resident and make sure that those meter numbers, and so they have a, it's called an MIU, it's the trans transmitter number. Um, making sure all our numbers match up. Uh, we intend to, uh, I have for in Maine, uh, Dan Hawkins coming in tomorrow. We're pulling our list from, so, um, to match up with Neptune. Um, he's gonna help us go back tomorrow. Um, and we are trying to get everything matched up. Um, it's a arduous process, uh, the meter install. I have probably a thousand tags up on one of our desks that, you know, there are piles of this, and we've gone through every single one, trying to make sure that they match up to the resident, to the proper meter. Um, but we are moving forward as quickly as possible. Uh, we intend to, this is August. So by October first, I want to be able to buy meter reads to residents to show what, how much water they're using. And we do this in the winter time to give them a domestic use. Um, how much water that they're just using for cooking, cleaning, showering, um, laundry, and that will be their base rate. And then as they move into, uh, April, May, I think it's May is when we go back into irrigation season, they can adjust what their water is. But we want to give people ample time to understand how much water they're using, if there are leaks in their toilets or leaks in their house that we can help alleviate before we go to a meter grade. Um, it is my intent, January first, uh, we go to a meter grade, and we still have to talk about this as council. There will still be public discussion. Um, the way it's written in our ordinances does not match up with our billing, and me and the mayor have talked about this. So there's still quite a bit of work to do, but, um, we're making huge steps. Last fifteen years, this has gone into play. Um, we are the closest we've ever been as a city to be um, able to provide a meter grade to our residents and, um, help them understand how much water they're using, and then we can identify how much we have to bill, because we are going to bill based off of EDUs, which our ordinance says, how much it costs us to provide water to the city. We're not trying to make money off of this. We're just providing them water and cover our costs.
And I want to just jump in here. Um, Kaylee, uh, Baxter has put together the, uh, steps for launch for the meter project that has uh, come to our desk to review, to, um, put together kind of a, a similar update, uh, for council in, uh, what am I trying to say? Department head reports as we are doing with the water project and the, uh, waste water, uh, recommission project. So, um, that's just being formatted. Um, that list has been put together, what the next steps are, um, and we'll be able to use that as a more play-by-play to update council, um, and less, I mean, more will appointed, less narrative. So you guys can follow along with where we are and where we're headed in terms of the metering project.
Uh, that sounds great. I was also curious. My expectation is that some of this should have been, or hopefully will be part of the, the GIS implementation. These are all radio frequency meters, right? Smart meters. And I would, have you been able to implement any of the, or is that for the next year that you have budgeted for ArcGIS and being able to implement some of that as well that can be used for the, uh, the QA that you're obviously trying to do now, the quality checks for the, for the meters on the addresses? Or is it all a manual spreadsheet thing currently, and that's the, that's the?
No, I'm just trying to understand, um, so GIS i- i- is a mapping program, and, um, it doesn't give me any data other than location. So what is your question?
Well, when you have the GPS data, then you know what address is there, and it could be used to, for, to expedite associating the meters that you're reading on like the handheld devices or that you've already reported just as a method of, of having them all out there visually. That's what I'm assuming you're working towards, right?
So, all that is, so for each address, we have an address, we have a meter, and we have a transmitter number. So all those are, that's what we're cleaning up right now. Now, to get a specific location on where that meter is on that property.
Oh, no, just, just the association with, like, you know, the meter's got a tag number and it's a, everything.
So the metering project and the GIS database goes into an asset management plan where we put into the, what's the metadata? Says this meter was put in on this date. It's been in the ground for fifteen years. We know how long it's been there. So we know that we can update or replace that meter every, for its lifespan. So that's where the GIS comes in before. Uh, i- is for our asset management to understand that we can update everything. Um.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just, once we have late data, everything tied to the correct addresses, we have an address file that, okay, I say the current.
I would have the address data to know that it's in the middle of this residence.
What did you say, Stan?
I was, I, I, that's, I, that's great. I'm, I'm delighted to hear it. I thought that's what I was kind of asking was, was that part of the process? And so, thank you.
That's not, to, to clarify though, that is like phase two, um, in terms of the metering part. So yes, it's part of the process, but the first part of the process is matching up all the meter numbers, getting meters turned on, getting appropriate reads and communications, and then asset management and address linking is base, would be a phase two.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just a question on the water project status report. It's on the last page of that report, this is over two pages. Um, it mentions the Environmental Protection Agency's conducting a Buy America, Build America compliance visit in the north. What, what is that? I guess it's my question. I don't know about that.
So while that was put in place back, I mean, I'm not going to give you a year, but.
So, yeah, COVID-related.
In grant money, it, it is to increase infrastructure to Buy America. Um, we want to make sure that we're resourcing all of our materials from, um, American steel, American plastic, American, whatever. So it, it is key money within our country instead of outsourcing it for inferior products from China or elsewhere. Um, Build America, Buy America. Um, it is a federal program that once you accept a federal, um, grant or loan, um, they require you to, uh, purchase America first. That's, I mean, that's the that we've seen it in the eighties. It's now come back around. Build America, Buy America. Um, we just have to make sure that all of our pipe that we put in the ground, anything that we buy when we start actual infrastructure implementation, um, is resourced from American companies.
And to comment on that as well, at this time, there's not much for them to visually inspect, um, because that's not where we are in the process of the project, but it will be more of a discussion.
Uh, they, they just want to make sure that we're aware that that is a policy that we have to follow. Um, right now, we've done all the survey is, I think, is, 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 is getting close to completed. They're putting all the data together. We should start seeing by, I would say in the next couple of months, a preliminary design that we'll review, and, um, that will help with costs. That'll tell us how much we're anticipating to spend for the full build out. But yeah, this is just, uh, EPA, uh, they chose two, they chose our site and one other site, and both of them are in the preliminary design phase where we're at. Uh, Merrick has seven other builds that are actually putting stuff in the ground, and they did not want to go visit them. Um, so I think this is just kind of making sure we understand that, yes, you have to follow this. We will buy American vehicles.
So is this a spec that you put in the bid bidding project that it must?
It's, it's been, it's been in all of the paperwork. Um, uh, I mean, there, it gets to the details where even your internet provider, uh, I mean, it gets down to very, very monoskill amounts of how much that they are looking forward to make sure that we are using American companies to build American infrastructure.
We'll make sure that we get an update off to that, maybe in the next, I'm running up as well.
It'll be in my, it'll be the primary in my department report.
The, the one other table, just based on your timeline table, was they, that Merrick continues to refer to a lack of, uh, agreement to access additional parts of the property. Is that something the city's working on or that Merrick's working on with you?
I am working on it with, um, the landowner. Uh, we've have developed a very good relationship. I've been sharing him weekly data on our water usage. Um, I've been bending over backwards to make sure that, uh, the city is up to on their side of the MOU and giving him the best data I can give him, so we have the best access.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Clear water from last.
Whatever, or water? Yes, it is in here from last month.
Uh, do we need to discuss that?
Because, uh, I just wanted to see if there's any further discussion. I didn't know if it was.
Uh, look. Okay, so the clear water questions, thank you for bringing that up. The clear water questions that you had from the last meeting, um, the detail that you were looking for to understand the clear water sprinkler head charges were in there. Uh, for this, or this agenda's approval.
Thank you, Shelley.
Yeah. Thank you.
I would move to approve the consent agenda for August eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Council Member Bergen.
Yes.
Council Member Reed.
Yes.
Council Member Mahoney.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're moving on to item six. This is our wastewater plant project update, um, and we do have Andrew. Um, so Andrew, I'd love you to kind of pop in and just give a high level, um, little footnote of your memorandum and then stand for any questions from council.
Okay, um, the, the high level is that, um, pretty good progress was made. Um, the, the crews that are working out there ran into a, a few issues, um, that they weren't anticipating needing to be done. Um, primarily working on the chlorination system. That, that was an unintended consequence, but it's necessary to make sure you're disinfecting your current wastewater. Um, they wanted to make sure that equipment was also ready and wasn't going to have a second issue once the full plant was online. And then the other big item that got taken care of over the last two weeks was all of the soil samples and what's called flesh samples of the fields that you're doing your land application on. Um, that testing just takes a significant amount of time because you have to walk through all those fields, pull samples from different regions and get them labeled and then into the lab. So that work has been done, sent to the lab, waiting for results. It'll go into your, um, permit cycle report that happens every year. And outside of that, some, the WASP tanks, that water recycle tank, um, getting the haul truck back in operation was really, really helpful. So I know it's not part of this report, um, but it did speed up the work this last weekend as well. So over the last week, post this report, they actually made a lot of progress, and it sounds like the control contractor will actually be on site here this next weekend, and that's going to allow some of the testing that we were not able to verify some of the equipment, whether it was working or not. Um, we'll be able to do some of that testing here in about a week to let us know if there's additional equipment that needs to be replaced or repaired, or if it's all functional. Um, so good things, it's all moving in the right direction and, um, schedule-wise, we're still on schedule from the original. You know, some things have slid forward, some have slid back, but overall, we're still looking good for that, uh, original planned completion date. Um, in November, the November first completion date.
Any questions for Andrew?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, Chris Johnson, Public Works Director, please add.
So I want to thank, um, Casey McGee, our, our, uh, street supervisor or, uh, asset management, what we're calling.
That'll be effective, that is not just, so he asks street supervisor.
Um, he went down, uh, Bryson asked him to go get the truck ready. Um, I had been asked before for a couple of months, what do we need to do it? Bryson said, hey, I need this working by Friday. Um, but Casey went down there, we had to replace, replace a couple of batteries. Um, he was able to troubleshoot a few things and, um, called in last swap, get the tires flipped out, um, filled up. Um, Casey did, he's not, he is not a mechanic, and he does not want to be a mechanic, but he, he has done an amazing job to get that truck up and running. We did, uh, five loads last weekend, seven loads this weekend, and what we're talking about is to get the WASP tanks. So say your tabletop is, is the top of the tanks. We need to get them down to about, you know, second level down here, um, so we can get the new flow meters in, so we're not putting in sludge as we replace the flow meters and everything. But, uh, you know, Casey was a trooper. He got stung twice with wasps. Um, we got that truck running in five days. So I just want to recognize the amount of work, um, that he's done and just we are not Haley, where we have water department, where we have a wastewater department, where we have a streets department. I have a crew of five people, and these guys have been stepping up with, uh, hydro flushing, getting stuff done at the wastewater plant to help our crews down there to make the weekends happen when they have two to three days. So I just want to, I just want to give them a kudos on how much they're doing for us, and that they are doing more than their thirty percent on the water wastewater side.
Yeah, I saw the truck hit it north. I didn't follow it, but. Good, well, that's a good sign.
Uh, again, on, on, on that side, uh, Thursday, we had to do a, uh, emergency, uh, street sweeping. Um, rock trucks are delivering, um, stuff up north for different projects. There was a bunch of rocks spilled, um, through town again. Uh, Casey had to jump up, um, get a back truck going, and, um, swept the streets, and, um, people were upset that they were delayed by thirty minutes or thirty seconds. I mean, we're, we're no more interference in the day-to-day operations than um, Mount Rises when we're, we're trying to clean the streets, but, you know, us getting out there cleaning the streets, um, saves people's lives, so. Let's understand, we don't mean to slow you down by a couple of minutes. Um, we just don't want to have to, you have to get rid of windshield. I mean, that's why we're out there on Thursday. So I apologize, but it can mean somebody, but, you know, again, Casey stepped up, he saw a problem. I think Marshall called him in on it, and he took care of it, so. Not everything could be planned. I apologize.
Any, um, further questions for our Public Works Director or, uh, Andrew Kimel from Great West in regards to the wastewater?
Uh, Mr. Kimel, I just had a couple of questions about when those test results would be returned, and then based on those test results, is there anything that that could possibly cause delays in the project or, or that would in, uh, impact um, the timeline based on those testing results?
So those test results are. So those test results are just to monitor how your current system is. Is dealing with the wastewater. Um, it it doesn't actually impact. Completing the work other than it took your staff. You know, like a full day away from working on the project to do that portion to keep you in compliance with your. Permit. So that's that's why I put that information in there is. Um, when you lose essentially a day of available time, it it impacted this schedule. But it was necessary so that you weren't in violation with DEQ of your current permit. So there's a, there was a balancing act there. Um, of of why they had to pull off and do that, but it's and as far as getting those back. Um, I want to say usually within thirty days for the samples that they are because. They're not tests that have to be ran within twenty four hours. Um, Chris would have a better handle on how fast the Magic Valley Labs are with those. Um, but usually it's within thirty days as far as. What's happening with the fields. If they come back high, it may adjust how we're. Applying or what rate we're applying water to the fields, but that would be. Um, about the only impact not to the project, just to how you're operating the system currently.
I can give a little bit more detail. So we're required to do two water samples. We have six uh, um. Testing wells that we test in spring and fall and then we have to do a tissue sample for the harvest. Um, we're looking for nitrogen uptake, phosphorus. What's in the plants? Um, this is a alfalfa field. Um. Alfalfa is a great friend of ours because it does take up a lot of nitrogen. Um. It has no effect on operations of the plant. It is all about uh, permitting and we are. We we were, so we received feedback from, I think, uh, Mr. Birdie and Broderin last uh, meeting where we had. Six, eight points that we needed to respond to by August fifteenth. Um, with Andrew and Bryson's uh. Reports on the status of the plant and where we are on bringing it back online. Um, we are gonna hit our target date of August fifteenth. I basically have the report completely finished. I'm just trying to finalize a couple of things. My biggest concern is a wheel line that goes through our our. Reuse and I need to talk to the compliance officer on. Our options there, but uh, we are on schedule to meet our deliverables. And it's just part of our compliance and we should have our reuse uh, license submitted or permit submitted by August fifteen.
Um, thank you. And so is that permit also, as we know, we don't have any capacity currently per DEQ definition as Mr. Kimmel. Is that part of like this testing also gets put forth on November first? That will be submitted as part of the qualification for. For regaining our capacity at November first. Is this information pertinent to that?
No, uh, it has nothing to do with capacity. What it has to do with is our discharge. So there are two types of discharge that are done through the state. Either land application, what we use or the RI basins, which is also considered reuse water. The second one is discharge, which is primarily gone into a a river or um, so like. Catch them. They discharge into the bit with um, many systems discharge in the sink. So our reuse permit. Validates or or looks at. Our levels of nitrate, phosphorus, ammonia that gets put into the ground and then we have to show that. Through our our testing samples in our wells, that we are not exceeding so many parts per million on nitrate. So many parts per million on whatever else. And then the tissue samples. Their healthy tissue samples for the for the plants. So it shows that through our process. We are exceeding um. Their 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 asks for what we are discharging. Um. We have fairly nice with doing a reuse. Um, is a lot easier than trying to do into a river body where you have to treat to a higher level. So we would have to. Instead of being a class. C system, we might have to be a B or an A system to discharge into a waterway. Um, but again, we're using a method where. Alfalfa updates the nitrates, updates the phosphorus and with our reuse basins and the. Plants and everything there, it updates it. So just about. It does not affect our um. Ability to do more or less. Um, that's all in the process facility and another chain of membranes.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions before we? Thank you, Andrew, for joining us and thank you for the update and. We are going to move on to item seven. This is our community project update. We have Courtney Frost from the Blue Cross Idaho Foundation and Tasha Box from Reynolds and Myers with us tonight in house. Usually the podium really would be nice if you want to stand behind that. Um, I want to make sure everyone's can see you well.
Can you? They're not grabbing me. I'm Italian, I'll wave my hand a lot more, I promise you. I told you, I told you, Gaby. There we go. Awesome. Um, so hello all. Again, I um, had the pleasure of speaking with you all in May of last year. Not quite sure about that, but. Perfect. Uh, so we are here to give you an update on the community project grants of the city of Bellevue. Received this year. To move, uh, just yeah, I'm gonna give you a heads up. Uh, again, my name is Courtney Frost. I am the executive director here at the Blue Cross Idaho Foundation for Health. Um, we have a mission of um, improving health of all Idahoans here uh, throughout the state. And our footprint truly is the state of Idaho, which I'm so proud of. But that means I get to work. With a wide variety of communities and partners throughout the state, uh, when we talk about health and community health for us. Uh, looks a little bit different to what most people's definition of health. As we think of health, you probably think of. Where I'm gonna do, I'm gonna try to. Is that why I think interactive? That's what I wanted to do. Interactive. It is maybe in the. Or in fitness or in the. Hospital, yes, absolutely. This is like a. Like that's what I was trying to do. Yes, but we have a theory that health happens outside of the doctor's office. Your health. Really is impacted by every single thing that you do today. Twenty four hours of the day, every single day, where you sleep, where you eat, where you play, where you walk, where you. Eat, where you pray, where you work. This is what impacts your health. So I just wanted to set the stage right there because some folks are saying, would say. What are you doing talking, you know, working with the city of Bellevue about health grant? What does that mean? So uh, a few years ago, we worked with a third party, a third party consultant. To look at what are the pressing health issues here in Idaho? Um, what are those factors that are impacting Idahoans? And isolation along with civility, social discourse was one that was really bubbling up to the surface. Of the meaning to be a health issue that we need to address as a community. We also work with mayors throughout the state around what can they do to literally create the healthy community? For their uh, constituents and their residents. So we uh, we decided to actually pilot this program about three years ago. Uh, called the Community Project Grant. And that is to do a couple of things. And then literally bringing communities together by outdoor public space. And then also working with technical assistance experts to find other ways of. Bringing communities together, whether that means uh, community pride, whether that means bringing. Um, tools, tips, trainings around good uh, more efficient communications. So that we all know that if we're heard, we hear or we feel a more sense of belonging. Um, and really listening to residents. So. In twenty twenty five, the city of Bellevue was one of many communities that applied for this grant. Uh, it was eighty five thousand dollar grant with four, five months technical assistance along with it. And out of all the communities in Idaho, the city of Bellevue was the one that was rewarded. So I really do, yes, right. Yes, Shelley. Yeah, uh, so I just, and I will say, working with your community for the last um, five months has been such a joy. And I have learned so much. Um, it really was a team effort led by a lot of people here in the room. Uh, but then your community members really stepped up and uh, gave their feedback as well. And so. Um, I'm gonna step aside. I want to just give you a high level of who we are and the grant. Uh, and then really what we did here uh, with with Bellevue is gonna be what what Tasha speaks about.
Wonderful. Okay, my name is Tasha Box. I am with Reynolds and Myers, which is a marketing and consulting agency that. Has worked closely with Blue Cross Idaho Foundation for Health for purposes specifically like this. So we've been spending dedicated time. With you all that I've seen, the city members that uh, we've worked with. Just to discover what it is that the city of Bellevue wants and needs, not what Boise wants the city of Bellevue to have. So that was the idea throughout this whole process is to rid ourselves of any thoughts or preconceived notions, come into the community. And understand what the wants and needs are based on what exactly what we hear. So the first thing we did was we created an online survey. And the online survey came with a little bit of promotion and that promotion was to get an idea of who is engaged within the community. Uh, it was done in both English and in Spanish to make sure that we could capture everybody. There's high Spanish speaking, as you all know, Spanish speaking population here. So we wanted to make sure that we were able to capture as much input as possible. What that did is that was just a high level, just sort of like, do you feel like this is uh, outdoor public gathering spaces are important? Who are you? What kind of needs it added um, opportunities for people to leave extra comments? Those are key. I'll get back to that in a little bit. Um, but the main thing is we wanted to look at see uh, the engagement rate and then also who wasn't engaged. And that was the biggest piece right there is that who isn't engaged are the people that we want to bring out of their homes in order to come into the community and use our community spaces. Um, so we took that information and we moved to the next step. And so with that information, we came into Bellevue in May. Uh, we spent two days here and the goal here was to work with. Um, also a Spanish speaking translator. So we all worked in this kind of like a huddle and we went to different locations. And the thought and the reasoning behind the locations we went to, which were a variety of places. Um, but the main thing was to go and reach people where they were and just living, not having anybody have feel like they have to come to us. So we wanted to integrate ourselves as much into the community as possible by going to Ridley's by La Comendina, which by the way, sounds really good right now. Um, so hungry. Um, so and then just making stops along the way, even just going to Dollar General. Um, just going into different places and just asking for thoughts and opinions by not having any leaded conquer. We didn't lead them in a conversation. It was really just more like, what is your life like? Let's get an idea. And what we were listening for was mostly what people weren't saying. It wasn't the responses to the. Questions that we were asking. It was really more what is life like and what do I have versus what do I not have? And is there a way that this community project could build, enhance or create? An answer or at least a support to those things that they were talking about or saying. So. Very highly technical, as you can tell, but really just getting to know people. So we took that information um, and bundled it all together. Now back to. Uh, the technical side of things, the main part about from the city standpoint, and this is kind of how we come at it from both directions. And so we're speaking with the community to get their feedback um, and have the community guide us in this, in the decision making or recommendations. But the other part is we worked with city, uh, the city specifically around communication and communication, coaching and training. And why did we do that? So the reason for that is a heard community is an engaged community. And what we hear a lot, and it's no different here, this is one of those consistent things is. Why was never asked or I don't know or um, you know, like when I say these things, it never happens. You know, you hear those key phrases and they're not all wrong. And we all know from this side of things when we're planning things, there's a lot that's happening. And there's a lot that we're trying to uh, work through and adjust and consider. Um, but what's really important is that people can see not only themselves in the community, that feeling and that sense of identity. But that when they spoke, they were listened to. So that's what the communication uh, aspect came from is that transparent communication is, are we talking about the things that we're doing? And are we talking about that in real time for community members to be able to engage and participate? So bringing that portion of it with the community project is this work right here. Uh, the main piece is to say, I hear you and we are going to take this amount of money, these grant funds. And we're going to apply them to exactly what you said you wanted. Now, uh, we have some recommendations based on what we heard and these recommendations that I'm about to get to. Um, are really, you have to choose. You know, there's a certain amount of money and we need to be able to use this wisely. And when we say, when I say we have to choose, I mean, that's now going to be put into all of your hands. To be able to choose what to do first. But the main thing is taking that community and and requirement, I will say. Is the community, is the community's voice being seen through the steps that we're taking in order to spend these grant funds? So is there anything that I forgot through that process? What did I forget?
Um, I might pipe yeah, pipe in. Um, so. We, uh, as you heard, there was a lot of engagement, tools, templates, trainees, uh, feedback. All of that the city has. So it is not ours, it is yours. So you, even if you wanted to go through every single survey that every single kid or uh, community member has. Has taken a part of, it is there. Uh, and also I do think that this is something I would love to say about your community. And maybe you're gonna get to, maybe you're gonna get to. They love it. They love your. It's just like, it was like this overwhelming reflection when we ask these questions specifically about what's missing or what would you want more of? We got this. I mean, I just remember one gentleman so specifically when we're standing at the door of Ridley's and he goes. Look at this.
Yeah.
But what else could I want? And like, it's like, I don't know. Like, that's really beautiful. Yeah, and we wanted to capture that too because as being a part of a city, uh, being a part of city council or mayor. You oftentimes don't hear that. You oftentimes are kind of the complaint department or the end all be, you know, you. We get a lot of things thrown at you, right? So I do want to tell you that the feedback that we have received. Uh, was really, really positive. Thank you all. And it's really, really cool to hear that. I um, I've worked in this field for ten years doing similar things like this. That's not often that people say, and I love it here. Um, obviously, um. And so that's why some of the recommendations worked like you need to build a brand new plant that's gonna be. Yeah, you have eighty five thousand dollars, but it's gonna be fifteen million. And a lot of it was, you know, some. Amplification of great things that you guys are already doing, have already talked about. There's no, there is not gonna be. We've already talked about it with some of the parks committee and the mayor and some of the staff here. Uh, and it's um. There, there was no surprises of what we got, which is really exciting. That means, I mean, you all know your community. The community loves being here. And um, what we're hoping is again, this grant was not meant to be this uh. Silver bullet of like, you're gonna get this grant and then everyone's gonna love each other and everyone is going to be the. You know, you guys are gonna be the best communicate, you know. Yeah, yeah, everyone's at one potluck. Um, that that's not it, but what we're hoping is um, especially coming outside. Sometimes in philanthropy, um, that some the philanthropic folks have some uh. Things to say about coming into a community. It actually is really beneficial because they don't know who we are. We're not neighbors or related to someone here. So they're really honest with us. Good, bad, or whatever. And they're really honest because they're like, who are you? Okay, you're not related or the neighbor or whatever. I'm gonna. Okay. You're not related or the neighbor or whatever. I'm going to tell you what I think. And they do. And so just wanted to give you some of that commentary.
Yeah. So what we do in this, we plan to come into a community. Most times it's building an outdoor gathering space. That's typically what's happened in the past. Here our recommendations are enhancements. There isn't anything we would recommend to build because the community likes what the community has. How can we make it better? Those are our recommendations. How can we make it more engaging for all ages? Also Kristen, to her credit, threw a little pizza party for the tweens and teens, because the tweens and teens were not giving that feedback, but that was really important that we had that feedback. So together we just kind of like made that suggestion and she led that charge and we got some great feedback from that, from that demographic. And that was important for us to get feedback and input, even little comments from all ages in the community, because that's who we want to come outside and engage. So let me not string you along very much further.
I feel like, yeah, like I feel like we built this up like such a big thing and you're.
And it's also going to be of no surprise to you all. So. Okay. So I'm actually going to read this specifically, our main focus area, the site for the most enhancements we suggest Memorial Park. Memorial Park specifically around that stage area, making that be the one area of focus. Because we heard a lot of feedback that had to do with music, entertainment, Labor Day. You know, people are there and they just want safety. They want to be able to utilize it and they want to be able to utilize it more. I'm going to start, stop there because what happened after that or the timing of it, or if that's the priority, is completely your choice. The other, I have just a couple of other things here. That basketball court, consider transforming it into a multi-sport use, meaning including pickleball and/or tennis. That, the amount, if, if the amount of people who suggest pickleball are actual pickleball players, there should be some sort of like official organization here because that's how much feedback we got. And then a lot of family gathering places, specifically around, we want to get together and we want to have our families, whether it's a family reunion or a Sunday dinner or a graduation party, even weddings. People were talking about, I just want a small, small wedding and we want to grill. We want to just feed each other. And they wanted it specifically at Memorial Park. They actually leave town to go use the park just outside of town to do a lot of these gatherings and they wanted here in Bellevue. So just maybe some grills or some sort of ability to come together to eat. I'm just going to say that. This is me not telling you what to do, but really recommending that these are the ideas. And then the last part is along, it's just some sort of trailside bike repair station or, or you know, something that can be, and it doesn't have to be located. Obviously it's your choice where that would be located, but something to blow up your bike tires or fix a flat or something that had a light there for safety. There are just a lot of different options that we can go with, but that was another one that we want to be outdoors. We're always on the trail. We're here with our family. What about these ideas? I would love to say that these ideas are ideas we came up with, but they're not. They're actually taken from the feedback. So those are our recommendations. And then just kind of like a side, just like kind of a side note, next to the library there, there is it's some good space to have some gatherings and whatever that might look like. It's space that isn't being used right now for that specific purpose, but how beautiful and wonderful would that be?
The library was referenced a lot.
Yeah. I'll spend our time there. Yeah. Yes. So I don't mean to be bouncy all over the place. I just want to make sure that it's very clear that we're not telling you what to do with your money. You obviously get to choose, but that's the feedback we heard. And that's the recommendation that we have.
So our process is we give you all of this and then is up to the parks committee and you all, and then we did have a core committee of working for the last four months. On this, so the core committee really was every, every other week we, we all met. So a lot of time and thought has been put into this of, so I just have to kudos to you. And with that said, any questions or comments from council or?
They're all good ideas.
It would benefit me if I were to get a copy of the survey result.
It would be great. We received the document today, so we will make sure. We did about share with you.
I mean, anyway, it's been wonderful to work with you all.
Thank you very much for the work that, that you did.
We loved it.
Yeah, it's great. Well, we, we really appreciate it.
Hopefully, hopefully we can still stay connected and working with you all. It's pretty rare that the foundation works with the community for a long grant or two and we had the pleasure of working with Kristen, Shelley, two years ago?
Last year.
Last year. I'm sorry. And then again, working, working with you there and your direction has been great. So thank you so much for again, your commitment to the better of the community. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Heather, thank you to Portia and Tasha and I will make sure that the results of all the surveys end up on the website and available for other community members to review in terms of some of the communication information, a bit of branding around Bellevue potential directions we could go that Tasha put together for us. That's something we will be taking community feedback on at our booth at the Labor Day event as well. And so while the wonderful work of Portia and Tasha pauses here for a little bit, this project now enters the hands of the city, the council and helping to make a decision about where we put those funds. And then the support of the staff that has been involved today and other staff will be involved in implementing the project. So this project doesn't end here. It just changes hands to the city of Bellevue taking the lead on this. So I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Chris Johns would like to say one more thing.
I, I would just like to thank you for the opportunity to work with both of you over the last couple of years. I think total a hundred and seven thousand dollars has come to the city of Bellevue from working cooperative with cooperative movement with you guys. And I really look forward to seeing what the final culmination looks like. And I cannot tell you how much we appreciate it.
Very wonderful.
Thank you.
We love you so much.
Going anywhere. Yeah. I'm like glitter. Yeah, we're going to have some tacos in a second. All right. Thank you all.
Thanks for driving up too.
Thank you for driving.
Enjoy your stay.
There's only one lane leading up here, just that way.
Okay. We will go ahead and move on to section eight of our agenda. This is new business. And item A, consideration of a memorial park reservation fee waiver request for the dates of August 12th and August 19th, 2025 for youth group gathering for Calvary Bible Church. This, we received the fee waiver request. So we felt it was necessary to put into your pocket for your review. I will leave it to you guys to discuss and decide if that's something we want to move forward with. Let's open it up for discussion.
Your question.
Yeah, I was, yes, I was just going to, I'll start off there. I called Amy earlier today to find out what other fee fee waivers we've granted. And reading, and it was also really helpful in her memo to have this criteria according to the parks, many recommendations about the criteria for granting those waivers. So that, that was, that was helpful information for me. So I want, I want to thank you for that. And they have had two prior events so far.
Yeah. I think the, yeah, I think the, the front page of the application says the dates that they're going to be using the park. I think it's seven PM to nine PM for a Bible study group. And they've already done a couple. I can't, I don't know exactly if it can look at.
Four other dates.
Yeah. And so it looks like they're remaining too. They originally asked for it a little bit ago, but we didn't, I didn't get it on until today. I think about that.
I would say that wasn't a hundred percent on you. I ran into them several weeks ago. They were having an event out there. They weren't fully aware of our permitting process. And I just said it was a health, safety, they're having a great time with the slip and slide that they had a, I don't know, it's probably a fifty by one hundred pieces of plastic and they were having a very good time. And I just talked to them and I said, well, we'd really like to be the supplier of a permit if so, in case someone got hurt. But we were covered, that you're covered, that we provide you with appropriate services. And that's what brought them to the table of actually applying for a permit.
And then the fee waiver as well.
I guess that it doesn't strike me as the kind of use that would be appropriate for a fee waiver. Mr. regardless of the entity to supply. Partnering per se with the city of Bellevue or any departments or committees of the city. Other tax stakeholders. So and as I was reading through the fees or the cost that we see pays for porta potties and trash removal at these parks. I mean, there are costs incurred and the more used to occurs, the more those costs are incurred. So fee didn't seem inappropriate, I guess, to me. It's not that much. It's ninety dollars. We can't afford ninety dollars. You shouldn't have the event.
Nothing. Okay.
Well, I, I would agree with Tom in that if having read through this criteria, it, it doesn't seem to me to, to meet the criteria. And in looking through the amount of paper process for this application and the fee waiver and Amy's time, it's probably just covered by that fee. So we, we had this discussion maybe last meeting or a couple of meetings ago about the actual time takes process and application and that it should be covered. So I'm inclined to make a motion to deny the fee waiver request for Calvary Bible Church.
Say it.
Council President Che.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Motion passes to deny the fee waiver.
Thank you. We are moving on to item eight, fee in new business. This is discussion and consideration of proposed ballot measure that would modify the city of Bellevue's local option tax. This is presented to you for discussion only this evening. This comes off of our discussions briefly in previous conversations and during the budget process. It is the way for us of the city of Bellevue, who is a resort city, to look at expanding our non-property tax, our local option tax for short called lot. We currently have a non-property tax on hotel motel occupancy at three percent. And the ideas for discussion for the ballot measure are one, imposing a one percent non-property tax on retail sale of restaurant food. Two, imposing a two percent non-property tax on the retail sale of liquor by the drink. And three, amending the not existing non-property tax on hotel motel occupancy by increasing the rate from three percent to six percent. These are proposed numbers from myself with input of staff for council opinions and discussion. I am bringing this forward. We had a lot of discussion around public safety needs during our budgetary process. And I feel that reliable funding is critical for us to maintain adequate staffing, equipment and operational readiness, and also just stabilize what that could look like in terms of getting to ideal staffing levels and maintaining that and not having as much instability in funding those aspects of our what's needed for public safety, continuing to utilize funds for the ongoing maintenance necessary for our street and infrastructure that have seen a much larger increase in usage and deterioration through the increase of what we've seen from the resort communities up north of us and also the resorts and tourism going to flow in and out of our city. I would also like us to have this discussion as an opportunity to look at diversifying our revenue streams. This is one option that we are able to flip into as a way to help potentially reduce some of the financial burden on our residents and capture some of the tourism dollars that are coming through our community and also look at lot taxes and securing them in a way because they're, part of this discussion is a little bit of on a legislative level, lot taxes are coming under threat a bit and it could be very wise of us to put this in place with a long sunset date so that we don't lose out on this opportunity as a resort city to have a lot tax and that it then can be taken away before we put it in place for the city of Bellevue. And then the idea with this is continuing the already existing framework that we put in place when the lot tax was approved in twenty twenty-two. Earmarking the revenue is an important part of lot taxes. And so right now, our current lot deals with streets and, and, and street and infrastructure improvements. And we would be adding on the concept of these proposed taxes going exclusively for public safety as well. So that there would be two areas in which these facts would focus. This is something that as a council, we must decide on collectively to bring to the ballot. And then the voters will decide if this is something they would like implemented within their community and that has to be a super majority at six percent and a force of law for the measure to pass. So tonight I bring this to you for discussion to understand where you sit on each of these taxes, the percentage of the tax that's been proposed to you and how you'd like to move forward on this. So I would like to open it up to you, council, for discussion.
Being a restaurant person, one percent and two, two percent, I think is fair. But six percent for hotels, what is Haley and Ketchup Charge?
Haley is at three with a proposed to go to four. We have seen other resorts within our resort cities coalition group go as high as fourteen percent.
Wow.
And that's in Sandpoint, Idaho. I might want to reference that. So there's, there's a expansion to groups. And Driggs has a similar higher frequency or sorry.
Recently I say that I want it to be comparable to other communities, but I people see the hotels are, are tourists. No, not necessarily restaurant. You know, we, we know we have tourists, but we're, you know, probably seventy-five percent. You know, locals. But also the people that are driving through town, going home at night. We should do that. That's why I say the one percent and the two percent is fair. Well, you know, and I probably go five percent of that. Hotels. Just me.
And I just want to just.
Instead of, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Go for it. Please.
And so instead of doubling the three percent. If so, instead of doubling the three percent, you would.
Five percent.
Go five instead of the six.
I would I would say. We we are, you know, we're we're not. Well, I hate to say it, but we're not catching work somewhere. We do have a lot of people are working in staying in hotels. But you know, they are, it's. But. Yeah, five percent is, I think it's fair.
And I just wanted to say that um that uh occupancy tax also applies to Airbnb's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Short term rentals. I just want to make sure that everyone knew that and then that current um lot tax sunsets in twenty twenty seven. Right now, so the first tax would end in twenty seven, so um. Regardless, I would be recommending depending on what we do with the percentage, um making sure that we extend that current lot tax that we have that sunsets in twenty seven.
Um Erica, one other question for consideration. Um. While we don't have an airport dumping people here in town. Um I I was wondering if it might be. Uh something that we could have a conversation about with regard to auto sales. Uh understanding we don't have any auto sales. In town right now, but that's not to say that we may not have. In the future.
And you're referring to auto rental or.
Can I say sales? I I apologize. Um rentals, yes.
I think, yeah, yeah. Everybody else does it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I I if if we're trying to. You know, take our crystal ball and look into the future. Um it it might be something I I'd like to hear feedback on that.
What do we what do we have the ability to do like? We should do it. I mean, I think Haley is three percent or higher, I think.
They're three percent and going for a one percent increase.
Four percent, okay.
Four percent.
Yeah.
On rental cars.
Sounds good to me. Because you know, if we don't, maybe all the rental cars will move down there.
I mean, I think that a lot of the discussions we've been having with this council and previous councils has been um. There's been a lot of, you know, how do we reduce or uh how do we just kind of make do with what we have? How do we kick the can a little bit further and? I know we've been having some hard discussions, some challenging discussions about uh not kicking the can down any further and actually planning for the future and. What does that look like so that um we can start really? Getting to the projects that are necessary to provide uh adequate services, adequate infrastructure and uh quality for our our community here. Um and so unfortunately, we're in a place where a lot of that future planning has not happened and so that's what we're trying to do tonight. Um and this is again a a tool we have in our tool belt for revenue that um. Doesn't fully burden our residents a hundred percent like a property tax increase does. Um and so this put, you know, distributes the burden while, yes, it will affect. People who live in Bellevue and who eat and drink in Bellevue. It also affects the people who are coming down for other communities to come. Um down in Bellevue and it also, you know, captures those dollars coming through Bellevue. Um and we do have. Death at spikes in our tourism within our community. Uh I think I told you guys in the past, one of the ways in which we've measured measured. What a resort city is, is the spikes in our sword flow. Um in different parts and that's kind of one of the deciding factors of what is constitutes a resort city when it came to bringing in those liquor licenses, those three licenses. Um so we we see the spikes, we see the the trends of when that tourism happens and. This is a way to ask tourists to, you know, help offset the burden of providing what we have to them um and and. Having our businesses that work really hard to provide those services be a part of uh collecting that percentage. Um and so uh Bellevue of the Wood River Valley between Haley and Ketchum is the only one who currently does not have. The uh food and uh liquor by the drink lot tax in hopes.
And I guess um. One other thing I would like to add to the the auto rentals um. Would possibly be like snow machines or the the razors. Is that what they're called those?
ATV and UTV.
So that's. So. Um but I was just, you know. Thinking broader. On that, I I know we do have a a ATV rental place here in town.
Yes, we do.
And I don't know if they do winter sports.
Currently no.
Yeah, but just something.
That's great future thinking.
Something to think of moving forward.
Is that um besides I hear Diane speaking to that and Sean, uh Tom and Suzanne, um we can get to the overall discussion. But is uh rental car sales and ATVs and UTV something you'd be interested in potentially pursuing?
I I think so because, you know, I'm I'm sorry, but. You know, ATVs, you know, he he's down there. This is primarily, you know, tourism. It's all tourism. I mean, that that's, you know. You know, if you want to borrow for a couple days for some for a family member, you know, it's it's all tourism.
Maybe well, often, lady, we speak specifically, Tom, I'd love to hear from you generally what you think and then rental cars as well, but.
Are there any, I mean, I kind of in that regard, are there are there parameters on? I mean, that's creative thinking, you know, like, that's great. The what what sort of.
Always been good.
That's a great, great, yeah. Creativity. Um and. So that it has to be kind of focused on the visitor dollar, I guess, essentially. So that's kind of what why you're thinking those two things. Visitor dollar. Is the state code say here's the parameters for what you can do um and and those are within it, then. You know, certainly seems reasonable to consider.
And some valley catch them also. They tend some ability. Supplies as well. They do it, don't they?
Um rental cars are definitely within the parameters. We'd have to double uh check on the ATV and UTVs just based on uh, you know, what it says, but rental cars are.
The the parameters.
Of the lot times.
Okay.
I I mean, in a more general sense, um. You know, I think this is an opportunity that we should consider. And uh I mean. And then maybe kind of more specific to the percentages um. Wanted to seem appropriate in the restaurant food and liquor by the drink. Can't go lower, right? And I and I don't know what other jurisdictions charge that might be higher, but those are also were things that. There might be more locals in restaurants and in in, you know, uh liquor by the drink establishments. In Bellevue than there are catch them, for example. So, you know, that's something I I'd be a little cautious about it um for that reason. The uh hotel motel, you know, doubling it. You know, that gave me a little bit of pause, but uh again, kind of knowing what other jurisdictions are doing in that regard is important. Um and. I I should disclose too that my family does rent a property through BRBO. Um and so that this will impact this. That I have the tables to do this. I think I'm disposed here. But. So that that's kind of the only one, you know, I guess not sure about, but uh in general, it seems appropriate and. And if it's done for a fifteen year period, are you locked into that? If you decide in five years that we went to a justice or or there is now a rental business in town that you wanna um. See taxed. No, I assume you can kind of always amend this as you need to.
Yeah, I think there's uh you have to just amend it through the ballot measure every anytime you want to amend it. So, yeah. And then I think there's eleven. Sales or just after anyone? I think there's eleven months here before you before you put another one.
And so that's kind of maybe the the other question is, what's the timeline for? Uh the idea is putting this on the November ballot.
Yes.
Right? And so. There's timelines for getting that done and.
Very short.
So the timeline would be um based on this discussion, bringing a um. Something back to the next uh next city council meeting for approval of um. An ordinance and uh ballot motion.
As I understand it, Haley is having a similar hearing tonight. They they're proposing some absentee. Changes and they're doing their first reading of their ordinance tonight, so. We we don't have a whole lot of time. I mean, I think one of the things. I'm comfortable with uh at this point is is we're having a discussion. Tonight about whether we want to. Put this in front of the voters. And I I like that the voters get to decide very much.
Yeah, and that might be a reason for. Being. Again, kind of conservative on things like the restaurant and for sales because they. All the breaks then.
Well, you need a sixty percent vote for to approve it. And so I guess one of the things you might want to consider is adding food or liquor to the ballot. People that vote with that. That's the. Who knows though? I think we do it again. It's just here. Two cents for each dollar. We put it this way, you know? Realistically, you you know. So wait, a five hour, but a five dollar drink, agree, right?
No.
Well, yeah, I was thinking a ten dollar drink is twenty cents.
Yeah.
Um or a ten dollar burger is ten cents. Um for the one percent or so.
This is liquor by the drink can liquor licenses. I I I suppose that that's such a stateful thing. There's been opportunities for local option tax on liquor sales out of. The companies, for example.
It does include beer, wine, um and liquor sales.
Yeah, yeah.
Way to think creatively. Nice one.
Well, I'm sure that a lot of people that screws you down.
No. See those together.
But hey, that, you know, that can of beer that they're buying, it's up for it. Um.
I I'm not, I I'm not saying that I favor that. I'm just just thinking outside the box.
You know, and uh you know, one other thing that I do take into consideration. Um as stated in the memo is that our community is changing and our community is growing and that is not going to change. And um. You know, Suzanne often talks about safe, timely, reliable, affordable. There's another S in there somewhere.
Sustainable.
That um and uh and so this is something that the residents apparently are asking for and. Um by by putting this to the voters and and having a successful outcome. Um hopefully would would give the city the ability to provide those services. Uh more easily. But Suzanne has not weighed in yet.
Well, I think everyone knows that I think that we lack the operational efficiencies. Um on that we are not as diligent and fiscally responsible with our current budgets as we should be, so I would not. Support additional taxes. Uh I do think it would be, and these are interesting opportunities. I think that. You know, I got to tell you, Sean, you say seventy five percent of your customers are locals. So to me, this is one percent tax on locals, two percent tax on the food, the locals. And so, you know, until there's some potholes filled, I I don't really think that we should be asking for more money, but I would love to see, you know, more analysis, even our analysis on your. On um, you you know, what does this cost? Is six percent? What does that really mean? What are the, what does Silver Creek say? Oh, not a big deal. It's thirty cent, but I don't think so, but. And maybe they see the value in those things, but I those are the types of, I know you all, I I drive you guys crazy with me saying, oh, let's do a a fiscal analysis, so. I'm just trying to keep out of the way of your brainstorming because I don't think I'm saying anything you don't know. Right?
Well, I actually did reach out to the owner of the Silver Creek Hotel um and had a a very nice conversation with him. Um this afternoon and he said that in the winter when. His hotel is full, you know, people get home. From skiing or or their hockey tournament or whatever they've got going on and they don't want to drive. Back up north to and same with a lot of us that live here. You know, you don't want to have to leave town to go to a restaurant and get it by to eat. And so it um he said he he. Always sends his patrons to our our local restaurants with, you know, some some great uh things to things to offer. Um so uh well. Um maybe not uh terribly thrilled with with um our discussion about doubling that uh. Tax. I guess we'll just have to wait and see if this is something that the council wants to put on the ballot and have have the voters decide on.
Where where mentioned, people, why why should I hear? Get their feedback.
I should, yeah, Jessica, yeah, yeah, I'm happy to read what Jessica opened up, wrote in for us. Um she couldn't make the next meeting. She said. Um I'm in favor of the addition of the local option tax for the city Bellevue. As our community grows, our public services are under increasing strain and a lot provides a direct solution to some of our most pressing challenges. The city's police, fire and emergency services are essential, but they require reliable funding to maintain adequate staffing and equipment. Similarly, our streets and infrastructure need consistent maintenance. The current revenue streams aren't enough to keep up with these demands and Lot would help with this and provide the necessary funds. To prevent prevent us from falling further behind. One of the most important reasons to support this tax is that it diversifies our revenue sources. Unlike property taxes, a lot is paid in part by visitors and patrons of local businesses, which means we can then generate the funds needed. For municipal services without placing the entire financial burden on local property owners. It's more equitable way to fund the services that benefit our whole community. Bellevue Bellevue voters have already approved a similar lot framework and this pro- proposal uh adjusts it to meet our current needs better. I would recommend moving forward to uh approve the ordinance when it comes.
What does Haley charts for? Uh beer and wine and.
Haley is uh three percent liquor by the drink and one percent food, the exact same.
I think that's fair.
And so with the number of. Restaurants that we have, what does that number break down?
I was able to do a little bit of a financial analysis based on um the uh lot income of uh other cities within our area. And uh based on that and our current uh restaurants and bar owners, the um. End result could be in one year around forty thousand from the liquor by the drink and um anywhere between seventy five and ninety thousand from. The restaurant lot taxes that we could add to uh our revenue. Um and that's just based on uh comparing to other cities, their monthly average per amount of businesses that they had operating.
Honestly, that's pretty on par with what uh previous mayor first did when we first discussed this four or five years ago.
And that, you know, we could increase our restaurants and business, you know, our our restaurants that become available. We do, we can do have empty locations still in Bellevue. Um and we still have resort liquor licenses available too and beer and wine licenses, of course, have no uh. Limit on the quantity that are available. So we could see. A range of those numbers there, but that was just a rough estimate based on. What we have, what we currently have operating and what other sales numbers are in uh equi- equitable cities to us.
And Amy, maybe I'm putting you on the spot here, but how many liquor licenses? Do we have out there right now?
Um and liquor license? Liquor licenses?
All the other beer, wine, everything, I'm wanting to say eighteen.
Yeah.
With liquor, it's only.
But are you talking about liquor?
We're talking liquor. I think it brought to point two was us and Lucky out and then three people. I mean. There's uh Lucy's and uh.
Cut through.
So we have two legacy lic- liquor licenses within our community and up to three resort city licenses. If there's a population change, we will receive one more uh like this or. Non restaurant, but regular liquor license when that next census comes through, but um that's currently what we have in liquor licenses and then the rest would be beer. But um that's currently what we have in liquor licenses and then the rest would be beer and wine licenses.
And if you happen to know how many restaurants or hotel motel rooms. VRBOs.
Hotel motel VRBOs, I think we're south of fifteen right now. Um and we've been doing a lot of uh work in the last six months on compliance with a lot tax payments, as I know. Um we've discussed and has become part of uh an important process for compliance to our lot. Um and we've seen um a positive uptick in uh. What we've gained. We're currently as of July, um just north of forty-six thousand on our um. Hotel occupants, hotel occupancy lot tax um income. And uh so in terms of. Uh vacation rental and short term, that is um I think fifteen or south right now in terms of numbers. And then restaurants, um I have a rough list here, which I, there are a few missing. About at least sixteen um currently on my working list for restaurants, so probably twenty sixteen and twenty that would be affected by the. Um pre the restaurant food sales.
Well, do you wanna keep the discussion moving?
Uh I feel like I I understood general direction where I'm hearing a little pause would potentially be on the percentage for. The um hotel motel occupancy. Um I'm hearing feedback around five versus six. Um and so uh I'm taking that feedback and then I'm hearing. An interest in something around rental car sales. Um the city of Haley has their lodging and rental car at the same percentage of tax. Is that what F L V would be interested in if we did bring that forward? Or would you like to see rental cars have their own uh percentage delineation?
Say that again.
Rental cars, would you like the percentage tax to be equal to the lodging or a different tax? Haley has it equal.
Equal.
Under one category.
Equal. Because rental cars are tourist only unless the car breaks out, but.
But there's also, you know, maybe you wanna consider that it's less attractive to come to Bellevue or rent a car. So maybe there's a reason to make it more financially attractive to. Truck on down here and pick up your vehicle. Like when you rent at the airport, it's a lot more than when you rent outside the airport. So just.
Can I get clarification from you, Councilmember Reed, if uh you are uh. Still pro the hotel motel occupancy tax that has already existed and issuing the rental sales tax because it's tourist-based or. No lot taxes at all?
Fundamentally, no additional taxes until other things happen, but I do not, I do not make, I'm not trying to. Devalue it as as a a mechanism. I I will also confess that I have not been. Um I have not reviewed why they've fallen out of favor as much as they have and why um you know, they're. Why you're trying to. Yeah, on a legislative le- level, so I'd I'd like to know that more. It's the same.
Okay.
You know, with things why we're in renewal area. In the tank.
I'd have to have that discussion as well too, because a lot, a bit of that too, where I do hear what you're saying in terms of, you know, why go for more taxes if. Um you know, we're still working on a little bit, uh not a little bit, but. Of our uh infrastructure and uh kind of our our maintenance and what we're providing to our residents. Um and a lot of the legis- legislative pressure is why I feel it's important to uh bring this to the November ballot, so. Brian, who's been representing us on the Resort Cities um Coalition Conversations, if you're comfortable, I'd love to engage you a little bit. On discussing the threat from threat on the legislative level.
Yes, so the last session there was a uh. Constitutional amendments proposed and a company. Uh legislation on local option tax that would grant authority statewide uh to all the Minnesota states. Uh however, it really ranked down on what authority there is. It's I think Matt capped it two percent uh generally. Uh it's uh that any revenue from that effectively gets pulled out of the property tax. Uh revenue we're able to procure. And at the top, we have to go to proper property tax relief. Uh so really, uh. If that were to come into effect, it would be a pretty substantial blow to resort cities such as ourselves that. Have an outsized impact from people coming into the community and seeing our structure, using our resources. But our courage go the last.
And what was the impetus for them to determine that? Property taxes should be balanced with these lots. Is it been understanding that perhaps as we've. Just talked about the items one and two actually. Potentially impact local residents, the locals by seventy-five percent, and perhaps they were saying that we weren't as. As municipalities being as diligent and assigning. Local option taxes that are supposedly gonna impact visitors but have a disproportionate, I mean, what was the?
I can't speak to the.
Okay, and I guess that's right. I'm sorry, so that's what I would like to.
Sponsored bills of.
Okay, thank you.
I think you can realize that. Reason if there's our cities and local option taxes is that. We were impacted by people not from our city, not from here. Were impacted greatly, especially, you know, our police department, for example. You know, our tourism and and multiple things were impacted. Not like a local city has no no tourism, you know, it's 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 a it's a big deal.
Well, and um to speak to that, I think that the important thing about lot taxes is um time them to exclusive the revenues to exclusive uses. And that's where I feel that the most, the high and best, highest and best use of these proposed taxes is to public safety. Um and street and in- infrastructure improvements, because those are the things that we see. Uh the most burden on in terms of the the tourist burden for uh the city of Bellevue. So um I think that that is one of the balance of the lot taxes is that they are earmarked for specific things that would then allow us to uh. You know, get into a better financial place for uh steadily and funding those things and maintaining those things. Uh that are earmarked here, so um I think that's kind of. A value of this versus property taxes, which are kind of that larger pot that go to everything. Um we get to really kind of fine tune. How even if the residents who will be paying into this, um how these funds can then be applied to um. Kind of offset the burden that they experience from tourism in a resort city, so. That's why I I kept it kind of very focused and not as broad so that um there. There was more uh transparency for the community on how those funds will be sent.
I think that identified as resorts cities based off of our infrastructure.
I did, yeah, I mentioned this, which well, a little bit earlier. And that is being one of the ways in which we experience that.
Yeah, so I asked the mayor is. To be identified as a work city, we needed to prove that our infrastructure was being expanded upon and used during high levels of. Traffic and we showed by our sewer rates that we do some even decreased usage during certain times of the year, so. It is a toll on our infrastructure and that's why I just go back to our police, our safety and our infrastructure.
Thank you. Um just in the interest, you were trying to be creative for or not, probably if you were being creative about your.
I think that's a compliment.
Uh you know, it, as you approach this November election, which has three, I believe three, maybe two, but then maybe to make. Uh levies. Is it something we should be discussing since this is a compacted timeframe and not to disparage your your group, but. We're gonna, the urban renewal funds that are taken out of property taxes are part of of very much putting. These getting, positioning these levies onto the ballots, and is there any value in looking at. Getting those funds back directly into the community when you say talk about growth. That money from, you know, that growth period, whatever it is, two thousand and seven, that's being taken out. From schools and from emergency services.
But aren't those different taxing districts?
No, it was.
But I don't want you to touch your pockets.
We, there's, there's money that doesn't go into the taxing pool, like it's extracted from the taxing pool into these urban renewal agencies, and when you reduce the money. That money, um then the growth that. Is that would be happening for the school districts and some of the other existing tax districts. It doesn't have as much money to pull from, so the urban renewal um. Construct is actually removing funds from the the other tax district, so. We're looking at, I mean, you're gonna be competing against the other levies, and then you're gonna say, and we wanna tax you, we're gonna tax, not us personally, but. Blaine County where you live wants to tax you for recreation, they wanna tax you for for schools, like a third levy for schools. And yet this other money is going um into Bura and there's, there's money flying all over the place, and so I just thought. There's um an amount of money in urban uh in our urban renewal agencies that. Maybe could help prevent some of these levies coming on and thus make it more attractive for a lot tax because there's an offset.
Um the urban renewal sunsets forty thirty, twenty thirty-one. Um I think that the, I think that's a further discussion in terms of the idea that the urban renewal um is taking. And then affecting the other level levies. Terms of the city of Bellevue.
No, it's just in general, I mean, when you look at your ta- if you look at your property tax bill, you see a number of different. Uh districts, right, and or different levies. And those levies, we we have two currently and one very small one for the school district. They're coming for another one. And when you look at what's available, the pot of money that's going again, so that pot is smaller because urban. The urban renewal um districts or agencies are pulling money out. It's not just Bellevue, obviously, it's catch on and it's it's.
You keep pointing at me, like when you're talking.
Well, I don't, I don't know, not suggesting you're in there taking people money or the, I thought you might have insight into things.
So, and I think that there's always value and looking at kind of, you know, what funds are coming into di- different aspects of different levies and how they're being utilized. I think there's a big focus and a big shift within um this administration and. New chair and staff member coming into Bura and making sure those funds are being used within uh the urban renewal. Area um and used to uh, you know, on revitalization and a big focus on that. Um I'm not aware of any way in which we can remove. Uh that levy that exists until twenty thirty-one. I think there'd be a process for how we can do that. Um if there's large overarching council um. Ideas to to go ahead and do that, I think that's for a bigger discussion, but I think right now the focus in terms of of our urban renewal. Is making sure um we're doing impactful work with those funds. Um in regards to the multiple levies we're going against in November, it is quite unfortunate because. Um I did uh push this from May of this year to November. B C R D had intentions of going in May. Um and so just to not overload the ballot, I was like, okay, they're going in May, we'll go in November. And um I know that's probably why there's other things that aren't going on the ballot in November, because it is going to be a heavy ballot. Um I think because of the timing of what's of what's been happening legislatively, I don't. Think it makes sense for us to wait again until May. Um and so if I'd love to take this to voters in November. And if voters don't like it, they will tell us they do not like it, they will deny it, and we have to again wait eleven months to bring it back. Um but the longer we push this off, the less revenue we're bringing in for the city of Bellevue. Um the less money we have to. Keep in our budget to continue to work on our streets and infrastructure and to steadily fund our uh public safety. Um I do want to look into the kind of the levy discussion a little bit, nor I'd love to have that discussion. I'll later pay.
I'm gonna take words an item that is voted on and that supermajority is required by voters that um. Appropriate to put ideas like this before them, rather than trying too hard to judge what's the best day to. Way to wait, except being, you know, maybe years down the road, but if it's an idea that has merit. And should he is able to put it by our voters, that it's appropriate to do so. Like it's their decision ultimately, right, or not just a majority versus majority, so.
Yeah, I'm kind of getting a general sense that we got, well, I think that five percent.
I'm getting that general sense on my question to the council would be what information. Uh would you like to see or potentially what would you like to hear in terms of um feeling comfortable on that five percent or is that a number that. They would like to see, what information, what other information gathering can be done um to create more comfort around percentage in terms of the hotel motel occupancy rate?
So five percent instead of the six percent?
Uh so if it's currently at three, I'm going for a two percent increase and also again um. Extending uh right now, the sun sets in twenty-seven and we would go for a longer period.
Uh I wrote down what uh Haley was doing, just as a sort of reference, if if there was more information. I I think one of the things the legislature might be a little concerned about is if communities like Sandpoint are charging fourteen percent. Or if that was the number, then now or other numbers of that size that that might be generating some red flags at the legislative level. And so knowing kind of what other jurisdictions are doing in that regard would be helpful to me.
Okay.
Obviously, that is to obtain it better.
And I wanna put it out there, but I think that when it comes to the hotel motel occupancy, I think that. Because it ends in twenty-seven, if it's something that we are seeing value from and will continue to see value from. Um I think no matter what we do in terms of percentages, it would be very wise of us to go for. Um you know, the longer period of time. I do want to let you know that when Haley goes to the ballot, they are uh. Looking for a twenty-five year extension um on some of their um theirs. Um and I put fifteen on the table in terms of uh the amount of years, and so I'm also open to feedback to fifteen years feels appropriate if you're like. We're going to the voters, let's go for longer or shorter. Um that's something we haven't touched on, but I'm open to feedback on that as well. And there's a lot of things for consideration, but.
So what would be, what what would be tough? What would be a reason to do five percent instead of six percent?
Uh well, it's, well, you know, it's not a doubling, you know, the current uh rate. And um. And Jay was doing four. For some reason, not for that, not that they're the basis for determining what we should do, but um. Yeah, I mean, and I and I, why, why do six versus five? I guess it's kind of this sort of question, you know, what's compelling about one number versus another and. And maybe it's just a little more conservative, so.
And while I understand it's it's a little bit more conservative number, it's like. You're, you're at the top of Curly Street and and while the the Haley downtown core is. Maybe two and a half miles north, Haley is still less than an eighth of a mile. From their south end to our north end. So it's, it's kind of apples and oranges to me in terms of.
You're you're probably right, four percent, like now, we, you know, we have to be.
You mean six percent?
No, I thought you said four percent, because Haley's going with three to four. And Sue B goes three to four too, and I think that might be, it makes sense. You're not, you know. Crack out, jump where, do anything, you know, it's, it's, I think that's right, four percent.
And my logic, to be honest, was looking at what we're currently bringing in at three percent. And knowing that that's just barely covering our um, you know, store removal services and. Um feeling that I would like to have the money, um you know. Go to more substantial infrastructure projects for our community that uh offsets. The deterioration from tourism and um just. Looking at what if that doubled and there was that same amount that we could then say, okay, that goes to. Um kind of that part and then this part goes to a project every year and or. Like an accumulation of funds that then means, you know, this section of road can be uh fixed, repaired, redone, et cetera, et cetera. As we're looking at the deterioration of our roads, how are we funding that um in the market to make sure. We're offsetting the rapid deterioration that we're seeing. Through years of, years of mismanagement and years of uh not projects being prioritized to get done. And that's completely honest.
The three you mentioned brought in thirty something?
We're at forty-six right now as of July. Um, so. You know, real low estimate fifty, but closer to sixty plus.
Yes, Mr. Chef. We've had various slight, light snow years. Uh, a couple of years ago, we had snow removal costs of like a hundred and thirty thousand. And um, so if you think about it, we do have heavy snow years. That lot that we're bringing in doesn't go very far toward covering those expenses. Um, in terms of just snow removal alone. Not to mention everything else.
You know, I not said, but I just thought a couple of things. One, it doesn't make me feel great to listen to. To putting the onus of our snow removal on our hotels when IDT, which are largely on Main Street or IT claims Main Street. And the rest of the snow removal is resident, is in our residential areas. I mean, the snow removal is so we can get out. So I don't know that it's something that the whole onus of our snow removal budget should be on our on our hotels. I think in terms of what these guys are asking about five or six percent. I think you've done a lot of analysis, it sounds like, and maybe you can show them what the impact is on the hotel rates. What their, the final bill is that people would pay versus five percent versus six and show them the difference.
Why is it done? Why is it the law council?
Oh, because I I would do it. I mean, I'm just saying, that was, they were the the ones asking. I'm sorry, yeah, Diane and they were discussing. And Tom were discussing five to six percent. So if in an effort. What did that look like? And I just love was recommending maybe that would be advantageous. And if in your analysis and to the point. Six percent, five percent looks a little better. Maybe you're willing to leave a little on the table for the optics for the marketing under ballot.
Nice. One second, I'd like to just respond about the um ITV Main Street and um they are not. Uh, the sole responsible party for snow removal on Main Street. And while Main Street is a heavily trafficked uh portion of uh for tourist traffic. We also have a lot of tourist traffic on our um other streets. Um, and with our transportation plan, we are seeing. What our feeder streets are, what our higher traffic streets are. So I I hear what you're saying in terms of putting a hundred percent impetus on. Um, the street, the snow removal, I think we can definitely look at how that expenditure is being done. But um Main Street is not the only street that receives burden from tourists.
No, and so maybe that's something you want to include in your in your ballot information saying this is.
I just want to make sure that it's a we, as the city of Bellevue, will be presenting this to voters, not Christina Giordani, the mayor of Bellevue. And I understand, but there's a lot, I understand that, but you're sitting on a council and this is a part of the decision, even if you're gonna vote for it or not. We, the city of Bellevue, are presenting this to the voters. It is. This is a collective council that is working for the citizens of Bellevue and making decisions. So it's not an us versus you versus them versus. You, it it's a, it's this, so I think that's important in how we discuss these things.
Okay, I think, you know, I I will not support this going forward. So I don't know how you want me to say I put this forth, but I will try and watch my terminology. Yes. We, all I was trying to recommend was that I thought it did not sound particularly, it it does not sound good to me to say that. That I would welcome the opportunity to look at the the map to, so you can show me that, you know, where the money is and the heaters and how much. You know, the the visitors are really using our residential roads, fabulous. And I was just trying to offer ways for you to help.
And I know snow removal has been the the way in which the funds have been spent because it's kind of uh the the amount has. Been equal uh equal or to what has been needed for snow removal. I do agree that I would like to see street uh improvements become a bit more of the priority use of the lot taxes. And that is kind of a part of a a a general looking at how lot taxes. Can be spent and the increase of the lot taxes, where we can apply those so that um it has a bit more potential impact for. Offsetting the burden that's that's coming through um besides snow.
Because it it does feel like in this discussion, it's it's kind of evolved in this discussion about making the LOT. And and creating this nexus with what money we're gonna bring in to our snow removal. I mean, I think it's a. You know, you you talked about. Potholes and, you know.
Yeah, it's not, uh, you know, outside of using parks, it's broader about that.
The use is broader and I think that my intention with bringing this to the council discuss is. Um, you know, looking at this as a revenue stream to uh continue to tackle uh the. The maintenance and the impact issues that we've been having on our infrastructure and come up with a, you know. Uh, again, a a concrete plan for the future that will help us um. Make sure those things aren't going by the wayside and not letting, oh, we don't have the money, be the excuse. So um. That's that's what you have presented here. Um, Chris, did you still want to comment? Okay, thank you.
Kind of next steps. I know you were intending to bring this back for consideration at next meeting. Is that, is it the desire kind of resolved this? Um, with our motel rate tonight so that you have something or is that something that?
I feel like I I I feel like I'm getting feedback that I can't quite be resolved tonight. Um, I'm thinking either we need to have a special meeting around this or we can have individual uh discussions. Uh, for the next meeting and I can put together a little bit of information um in order to get clarity. Before I bring it to you, because the next time I bring it to you, we will have to make a decision uh on moving forward with it. And so I want to make sure that the numbers. Um, kind of aligned with your desires and if. We need to make that a little bit of adjustment on the fly at the next meeting, we can, but I'd love to present to you um kind of a unified number that works for all of you.
Because we're not adopting, even next meeting, we're not adopting ordinance, right? That doesn't happen until voters approve that.
Right, we need to send it to the county. Before the election, so it needs to be by the twenty ninth?
August twenty nine. We've 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 got a a a deadline coming up quickly.
So the the number needs to be five or four or six or whatever.
By by that, produce a resolution and a ballot and.
Mayor, could I make a suggestion? Yes, so that we can include the other two council members to put together a special meeting. ASAP. For determining um what these. What these numbers will be if if we decide to move this forward to the voters.
Yes, and I think with that, um, I can put together kind of a spread of three, four, five, six. Percent on that uh hotel motel occupancy to the best of my ability uh with staff. So you can see what that could look like in terms of if we elected, left it at three, but it's four, five, six, and you could review that. Um, within that special meeting. I feel like that's kind of the next step to make sure we're all aligned before it comes to the council again. So I will have um Amy and I will work on getting something out to determine what that looks like. And also, if it would be a Zoom with the council, so we'll we'll make that work.
I mean, are we close enough? The three of us anyways with with what that number is going to be on the hotel motel?
I think.
Or do we need?
Four to six. It doesn't matter to me that much. You you know, I think four is probably safest route. But, you know, yeah, you know, I think so. Four is probably safer, so.
I mean, for the sake of time, I think you guys might just need to hear more information. I do think we did two absent council numbers. Um, that will probably.
I would, I'd like, I'd definitely like to hear how they put it in.
Okay, yeah. Uh, if there are any other, not any other questions, I would like to move on to another next agenda.
You mean, well, we don't have connection items. Okay, so we're just gonna look for a date to put.
Yes, ma'am. Um, item eight C, this is consideration and approval of ordinance summer twenty twenty five. Eric, sorry, twenty twenty five dot zero nine, I'm in Bellevue City Code Section seven one dash six. Street and alley improvements and provide an effective date. Um, I'll turn Florida Brian Parker, the development director.
All right, Brian Parker, community development director. Uh, this one is related to some items that have been in front of you guys recently. Um. In reviewing some uh certain recent land use applications, uh. Reviewing the codes related to that, one thing we identified as a. Issue is that if an individual wants to open up an undeveloped right of way, meaning there is platted roadway, but no road, it's just. Dirt, grass, whatever. Uh, they can do so so long as this is constructed to city standard and it's. And the uh the individual is responsible for paying for it. Uh, that is the current code as and now, uh, meaning if somebody wants to build a road, they can. Hand us some construction drawings, we send it to city engineer and then they go off for their, we deem it approved. The city is then responsible for maintaining that forever. It is a public street. We have the maintenance, allowing and gotti gotti responsibility to take care of it. Uh, and as a result, seems like it's something that should come to council. So this code amendment uh requires a public hearing and you guys finding that it is. The public interest to open up an undeveloped driveway. Uh, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
And you're referring to mainly those little stub roads, yeah, going over the bench and. Um, that or.
That would be an example if somebody wanted to theoretically, you know, build a bridge over the canal and connect into the power reserve uh there. A couple chunks of seventh and eighth streets up in the far uh eastern kind of part of the original platted section of town and uh. Uh, portions of Riverside Drive or developed but platted. That was what I was thinking, dropped my head.
I I would like to see the documentation of where this is. Why this has risen to a a priority, what exactly these things. Will look like, what properties we have currently that are exposed to this sort of area, right? And. Um, I also am concerned that both this and the other memorandum seek to waive um. Public engagement with the earlier recommendations. But this would be my comments about this.
Okay, uh, question clarification, how is requiring a public hearing? On road opening in this address of public engagement?
The move to waive the three readings of ordinance.
Um, I mean, that is fairly standard action uh for the efficiency of getting ordinance passed if that is most, if you guys would like to do. You're welcome to continue to have three readings.
I'd like to just circle back to your request for documentation on why this is risen as a priority. Um, at the beginning of the memo, it is uh, it was brought up during. Recent discussion um and review when we were looking at the lot line adjustment we were looking at and concerned that House Member Bergen brought up that. Hey, couldn't this be an issue? Um, and council all said, well, that's something we'd like Brian to. To make sure that we're not leaving on the table because as things are coming up, we're finding flaws in code. Um, and instead of just waiting until the next. Lot line adjustment or a large project comes through and, you know, we're caught with. Oh, we really should have taken care of that. Um, we're trying to take care of issues with code as they come up, address it. Make sure it's taken care of so then a project doesn't come through that we don't want to see happening. Um, and we haven't. Put put boundaries in place that then have more community engagement and council approval when we see fit. So that is why that became a priority based on that situation.
And so is this retroactive to this property that has raised this issue?
No, no.
This is for, and how many of these types of properties do we have? What these types of conditions do we have?
There are not a lot.
Well, say you have sixteen roads, if you have eighth through ninth and then you go north and south. You have the potential of one or each one and then future annexation. So this is looking at future build and grow out as well. Um, and like Brian just said. This engages the public to say, is this what we want to do? Because I'm not going to speak on it. And opens it up for further discussion instead of just being passed through through administrative review.
Just to clarify. Rick, tell me if I'm an idiot. Um, I believe that this is retroactive, that. And what I mean by that is that building, if they decided to put a road in, they would have to go through. This procedure if they did that after we passed this.
The only reason I said it isn't retroactive is because they haven't brought anything forward to us.
So they haven't, there is another.
We found the flaw in reviewing when we were discussing the lot line adjustment.
And I would just put point of clarification on future development, the standard practice is that they construct the improvements or. Pay us to bond for them, so we have the money to construct the improvements themselves. Should they go bankrupt or flee to Mexico or whatever, um, but. Sometimes things go sideways and lawyers are sneaky and sorry and.
I I mean, I I I guess compliment layer and staff for turning this back. Um. It kind of was efficient way as you have. Uh, and I think it's a good idea when you're down by an issue, okay, let's address that and solve it. Rather than it kind of falling off the agenda and falling off everyone's radar and doesn't get addressed. Um, I I also think this. Address, address is an important thing, which is that the council was involved in that process. There's a public hearing. And uh uh determinations we made that these uh actions are in the public interest. That's what's required of. State code, it's responsibility of the county that makes some kind of finding that nature. And uh, so I I think this is a good thing. It involves the public in that process, involves the council in that process, and that's appropriate. So I I support this. I mean, while I might have a couple things relating in language that uh would be. Worth of discussion. I I think the concept and what's before you is is uh important to adopt.
I agree.
I agree too.
So we don't, there is nothing currently, even with what came before us. This is not. If if this doesn't happen and they, what was your, what was, who proposed, they build over the the irrigation canal?
Right.
They could build currently without this, they can build a path, a bridge.
If somebody came up to you right now and said, I would like to build a bridge over that, I would transmit the document to the city engineer. He would say, yep, that is a good looking bridge. And off they go.
Would would there be some, if we're talking specifically about the canal, wouldn't there have to be some?
Right, way to burn.
But the example is that it's a industry that it doesn't come to us.
No, not your point, it doesn't. Okay, and so this is strictly about, this is the addendum to that. That it must come forward, which was your point in the previous. Okay, so.
And like the mentioned, I think it's Seventh Street or Eighth Street, you know, that that is a. Is a good example, maybe because it's not sort of such a good recent uh discussion, but. You have one of those neighbors decided, well, I can't drive down Cedar and I don't want to go north to to um. Yeah, yes, thank you. Um, as I went to my house there, the uh. I wanted to build a driveway from my house down to North Seventh Street. And they just come in and get a permit from the staff to do that. And I think that's something that should be reviewed by the council.
I agree.
Well, are your, are your tweaks? Something you want to run by us?
Uh, well, sure, I'll just a couple things here. I I mean. Uh, in the in the section one and the where it talks about that, the very last, the the last full line, it says, and. Uh, must be found in the public interest. And it seems like in that line above, it says. All street and alley improvements shall be, and why not just use that same language and shall be found in the public interest? Instead of must, I think shall is just a little more typical kind of word for that instance. Um, and and then above it says, you know, whenever any street or alley. In the city has been laid out in the plat, um, that that probably should say also right of way, because it's not always a street or an alley. And rights away are presumed to be for streets and alleys, I guess, but. You know, right away is a little broader and and so that that's maybe whenever a street or alley or right away in the city has been laid out on a platform. Um, because even like the at some of those spaces in Straymore, for example, you know, there's no street or alley that's been like. That's a right right away that's laid out for future streets and alleys, but it's not. Uh, currently, and so it's just a little broader term that I think has some, has some merit. Uh, currently, and so it's just a little broader term that I think has some, has some merit. And. Then the, the final thing is, uh, and the second whereas, it says individuals may desire to construct public streets. Um, within these right of ways. And and the language that's below in this street section really says provide access to abutting, abutting properties. And so, you know, they're probably not gonna just desire to construct public streets. It might be construct, uh. Probably not likely to be a private street, but it could be, you know, some other kind of access or or uh. Driveway and and so it's, I think, rather than. The construct public streets is a little narrow and maybe should say may desire to provide access to abutting properties. Within these rights ways, that's. A little broader scope and and what you're likely to see. Uh, individuals desire to do.
That makes makes sense to me.
Thoughts on that, huh, Brandon?
Uh, the code language I I agree with, I think it is a good call, but uh, reference right away rather than street and alley shall better than must. Um, on the whereas, uh, I want to be careful about what we are promising to the community that. Uh, are we have street standards in effect that you're constructing a street in right of way, meaning it is running. Within the right of way, down, up and down the right of way, it needs to be constructed to city standard as a public street.
Well, the whereas is not going to make direct block code.
Great, the whereas is going to be there.
This section.
Fair enough, I mean, I appreciate. If you want to construct a driveway, it's laterally attaches to a public street. We're not going to be permitting driveways running up and down both rights.
So Tom, would you be uncomfortable with those? Uh, changes within the seven thousand and six that you referenced that Brian is agreeing, in agreements with?
Yeah, I.
This man said the whereas.
Um, yes, now that the if, I I was thinking whenever any street or alley or or right away. That instead of eliminating those, just adding right away.
So straight on an alley or right of way?
Yeah.
And the bus to a shop.
Yeah.
Was that consistent with what you understood?
Yeah.
But we seemed, I I think I got off track as usual. I thought that seven point. Seven one six, as we said, was about bringing the, the proposal before the council for review. And yet, the line that we're all stalking about is all street and alley improvements shall be done according to city standards and specifications. That seems like. And that that does not seem to be about the public hearing. There, this seems like another requirement of how everything can be done that, and this does not exist currently if someone. Uh, the like you were talking about, it doesn't have to be done to a specific.
The code that is not underlined is.
Okay, and just the line is all you're adding.
But as we're. Leading.
Yeah, no, I get, I get the point of, that's why I said I somehow I got off track here.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Then does this give you, you want him to? Would you, would you like to go back to the drawing board and do these tweaks?
Um, I think that I can read the ordinance to you guys as amended. If that is the language that you guys like to approve, we can take a motion to do so.
You should.
And now you want to add in right of way. So we're not talking about just the underline thing. You're talking about up above and you're adding streets. Alley improvements and right ways or the streets and alley improvements always include that.
Whenever, if you had the first line, there's whenever any street or alley, there's all are existing. So it's just adding or right away.
So whenever any street or alley in the city, I'm sorry, or. Right in that first part.
Yeah.
And that's the only place, and that's where you're gonna read up, right?
And then the only other change is in the underline.
Yes, to show, okay, thank you guys.
So I I would, um. Yeah, make a motion to, um, waive the three regions ordinance twenty five oh nine.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yep.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Shay?
Yes.
The motion passes.
And I would move to approve ordinance twenty five oh nine.
Second.
Council President Shay?
Yes.
Councilmember.
So, our life plan was about. A motion to approve ordinance twenty five oh nine as amended, which is an ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Idaho, minimum city code by many section. Seven one six, street and alley acquaintance, writing an effective date of this ordinance upon passage, approval and budget for it to law.
Council President Shay?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yes.
Motion passing.
Sorry, man, I was just. I know I jumped the gun, I need to know, I'm seconding something that had already been said. Let's be very careful.
Okay.
So then I would also move to authorize publication of the summary of ordinance twenty five oh nine.
Second.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Council President Shay?
Yes.
Motion passes. And three.
Thank you all and. Just with the discussion and clarification. Uh, we are moving on to IONHD. This is consideration and approval of ordinance number. Twenty twenty five down ten, amending Bellevue City Code by adding. A new chapter to Title Four Health Sanitation Environment to Control Nuance Weeds, or sorry, Nuisance Weeds. And providing an effective date, uh, presented by Brian Parker, Community Development Director, um, in collaboration with Ray Beaver, Bellevue's Fire Chief.
Yes, thank you, Brian Parker, Community Development Director, as he stated. Uh, Jay Beaver has been working with this quite a bit, uh, uh, as well. He's really the one that wrote most of the ordinance. And I've been dating and uh. Getting it uh, ready for public or you guys, uh, but yeah, this is, uh, was part of his work plan for the year to. Do this and it's a combination of the public safety, fire safety. Measure as well as, you know, community practice, aesthetics, uh, managing deteriorating areas, that sort of thing. Um, but yeah, it uh. Establishes that overgrown, greedy nuisance properties uh, can't be evaded. Uh, after getting noticed by uh, the property owner to do that themselves, and if they don't, we will do it in for them. Really fairly, it's three sections long, pretty straightforward, um. I'll stand and bring class.
Um, are you now requiring that the residents are meant to. Serve the city to take care of, what is, what is it set up to the middle of the road, the street and to the middle of the alley now? And you're gonna find them if they don't do what you want and put a lien on their home, is that, am I correct?
Uh, we have the cover to do so, uh, that is the last resort matter. Uh, but yeah, I mean, so there are a few reasons why the code is written this way. One is that weeds grow quickly, uh, you know, if we need to. Figure out where exactly the right way is, hire a surveyor, one that's gonna add cost to the bill for the residents. Um, and time that those weeds are just gonna continue to grow and spread and blow weed or seeds around, um. I mean, yeah, right of way management is an ongoing conversation. We are working on it, we are doing stuff. And we are doing it a lot better in this, in the last couple of years on uh, maintaining a right of way and the street streets been out. Mowing alleyways, taking care of problems within a right of way. Uh, but yeah, I think that is how the code is written.
So the alleys, which I think we established early in the summer. Are not to be trifled with, with the residents. Right? There was some action against residents who tried to participate, you know, use them. So you've established the right of way and who owns what. You don't have to measure anything in the alleys, right? So where, how does this become the onus? Of the residents now up to the middle of that fair and that you're holding them accountable for this weed abatement on public property? As I write? No, did you read the, the ordinance?
On public property, where does it say that?
That's the, the alleys and the streets that we pay taxes to maintain. In the ordinance, it says. To the center of the street and to the center of the alley to pro- abutting properties. Am I incorrect?
No, that's what it says. And if that is language you guys do not want to prove, don't prove it.
And if the residents don't hustle up in ten days, that they'll be fined and a lien will be placed on their home.
It is deemed a nuisance. Right?
On public property.
That's what it says.
Yes, it's public property, right? We're talking about the streets. And the alleys that people pay taxes to have maintained as one of the services. So I absolutely agree that on our property, if we created hazardous situations.
But if it's against my property, then and it says in four, three, one. That it has to be. Two. You want me to read it?
What, it's four, three, two duty to remove?
The four, three, one.
Okay, four, three, one nuisance declared.
Uncontrolled dry vegetation, weed bushes, tall grasses would present visual. Right upon the area present to fire risk determined by the fire chief. Or otherwise threaten the health and safety or welfare of adjacent property. So if your weeds are up against my property or my fence, then then we can do.
I totally agree, that's not, I I a hundred percent agree that I need to maintain to code my property. That's not, I'm speaking about four, three, two. Duty to remove and the extent of that duty to remove into our public streets and into the alleys. And I simply don't see how it's appropriate to ask the residents to do that. And certainly, if you're introducing something as punitive as this and as far reaching. With people that struggle to take care of their own properties and now they're responsible for the streets and alleys that abut their property and if they don't, there's a lien. That's, I'm just asking, right, that's what it says, four, three, two.
So would you be more comfortable with this removing that language?
That, oh, I just don't understand, I'm, I'm answer, I just, it's alarming to me. And I, and then it's proposed with. A waving of of free reading, so this could have, this could be done by today if maybe I was out or and. And nobody would know until somebody gave them a notice to to get a move on, get Li Ji to get out there and. Make sure all the weeds are taken care of and the property we just filled with gravel.
I would be sure, yes, like speaking somewhere out of turn could study looking into this, however. Working for the municipalities around the state, um, most municipalities have that in the language, it is an aspect. But that, I'm assuming that that's probably where they got this language from.
Well.
We already have that in our right of way ordinance.
Uh, well, then why does it exist there again?
Because we're talking about weed abatement and fire protection, but we're not talking about policing and cleaning the right of ways. We're talking about fire mitigation in this ordinance, am I correct, chief?
Yes.
Including rights of way abutting the property to the center of any street or alley. Along or in front of such property within ten days after written notice to abate is given by. The city of Bellevue. In the event of failure. Then the city may cut and remove the cost of abatement, will include labor, equipment on the public. Property on the streets and the alleys that we think we're planning to maintain and reported as a lien. And yes, you know what, there are some places that have, that have tried this and gone after residents and I believe there's um, a case, a woman just won in Florida. That was exactly against us, so am I. I I just don't understand, we just told Li Ji to get the heck out of the alley and now you want him. To get out there and clean it. And I, I think it's, it's concerning and then to just try and say, and and let's not, let's make sure that the residents don't know. By waving the all the readings.
Okay, so back to my question that I didn't get to finish. Uh, would you be more comfortable instead of that language saying including rights of way abutting? The property to the center, blah, blah, blah. Would you be more comfortable having that word say excluding?
I think maybe just private property, period. That's uh, and. You know, and I, I don't know how many.
Where's the private property? When I bought my place, it was about seven feet tall weeds all the way to the road. So then I go in and I go to the setback, right? And I just keep it all cleaned up there. And then the city comes by, mows it down, which they have in the last two years. A lot better than it ever has been. And so. Then we leave it there. At that.
Honestly, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what it means. I mean, you're, on one hand, we're telling the residents they can't use the right ways. They have to maintain them.
When the neighbor calls me down at on Glen Aspen and they're. Trying to work it out with their neighbors. It happens every year. They call me and try to have me uh, show them something that they can't. Just leave their land wild, basically. And then I can deem it being a fire threat. So when it burns down the river, all those cottonwoods. We can't stop it from burning those homes. This gives us some sort of direction. So I can go in there. We'll probably never find them, it'll never get to that point. But at least they can keep their property cleaned up.
Well, you're talking, I said, you're talking about property, as am I, private property.
Right, the part of that property is the right of way to the alleyways and to the streets.
But we've already told the residents that they're not allowed to have any control or or any ownership of those right of ways. But they'll be required to maintain them to the city standards. Is that what yours, is that what this is about? Is that what I know? Or, I mean, how can you ask them to maintain? To like, well.
They are in plant of grass there or weeds or driveway or whatever they did.
But now you're saying that you can come in at any time and just say, hey, we don't like that, we don't like that, and you're responsible for removing. Well, that's what it says, that's what I'm saying.
Can we? Take a deep breath here. Tom, did you have something to add?
Uh, well.
Please.
Uh, I I don't know, I I'm kind of curious maybe to get um, Rick's opinion on this because declaring a nuisance. Kind of a broad thing to do and kind of tricky to do actually. Um, and and so, you know, there's quite a bit of authority granted here that. I I I have to say, there is a little hard burn on my part. It's one thing if the fire chief declares there to be a fire risk, that's. Different than someone else, which this allows, declares there to be visual blight. Or declares there to be a threat to the health, safety or welfare, which is quite broad as well.
I, I was reading and I thought maybe. If. If we're concerned about fire danger and it's vegetation that becomes a fire hazard and that becomes a nuisance. Maybe that's focus of this and not so much. Do we care what kind of weed it is? Or are we gonna define the weeds? Is it nap weed versus uh, some other kind of weed? Do they have to remove nap weed if it's not? It's not fire danger?
Uh, that is not how this is currently written. It's pretty broad on what exactly it is a weed.
So I think a prime example is out behind my house. We have a, a new development. There are three properties that, um. Match up to mine. Uh, a month and a half ago, somebody started clearing out all the sagebrush. They took the one lot, now there's a five foot by nine foot pile of sagebrush that's been sitting in my backyard. Across from my fence, or not in my backyard, but adjacent to my fence that has been drying out all summer long. Now, when Slaughterhouse Canyon catches on fire and that comes roaring through. That's what we're talking about. That is directly affecting my property and the ability for Greg and his team to. Put out a fire that's gonna affect my house. I don't think we're talking about the nap weed or. Anything else. It's fire abatement.
And and I can, yeah, I I. You know, that that's a concern certainly, and so if the fire chief comes out and says, this is a, this is a fire hazard, then that maybe should be dealt with. I think this language is quite a bit broader than that, however. Uh, and I actually think that that declaring something a nuisance because it's a noxious weed is appropriate. And and that maybe this is something. And and that maybe this is something that the county weed department should see or or the state weed because. There are lots around town and there's public right of way around town and have um, noxious weeds on them and. And people, I think, probably have a legal obligation to to attend to those things and should. And so that, some of this may already be covered by other jurisdictions, uh, but the nuisance thing. It's a pretty nebulous concept and and what this grants is probably broad in in my view. And and. Yeah, and and I just, I I think that if someone says, oh, there's a. Uh, an apple tree that's in an alley and, you know, I mean, back to that kind of discussion and and it's really not creating any fire hazard. And isn't the blight, you know, um, but someone thinks there's a threat to their health or safety. I mean, so that gets back to that right of way discussion, um, and and I'd see that some of that could be addressed by this and. And I'm not sure that's the desired intention.
I think it might be good to narrow this this scope down to fire hazards.
Yeah.
And not necessarily concentrating on the weeds part, but maybe just any dry vegetation. That becomes a fire hazard, that really include. Bushes, shrubs, old dead trees, Christmas tree from twenty twenty three.
Probably.
Stuff like that with piles or with piles, but. And then there's the other question, and I think it does. This or this, this puts the responsibility on the homeowner to maintain. City right of way in an alley. It's not belong to them and they have no right to do anything unless they did. So.
Well, then may maybe is there, is there a? As was with the previous ordinance that we just passed, is there uh, our brush? Right now, even though understanding we are in the height of our fire season.
This has been, like I said, has been on the.
On the list.
On the list for since, I think, January and uh, we were working on it and then we got the budget season and we stopped putting stuff on the agenda for a while and now we're back, so.
Do you have some authority under the fire code?
I don't. Only if it's a a four bucks or figure of business.
And I know that, I I know that I I've had issues in some particular landowner in Haley, the city of Haley that has. You know, you start looking at aesthetics and. Kind of call something a weed or visual blight, you really get into, it's quicksand. I I and it's, it's a lot easier to tie this to a standard like a fire hazard that's in the opinion of our fire chief poses. Uh, the risk of fire, I think it's a lot easier to. Deal with than trying to say. Somebody's saying, oh, those are weeds. I love the, I love the looks of nap weed. It has a pretty cool looking flower.
Especially when it's a bloom.
And we, there, I. We didn't just make this up. I didn't make it up. I looked at. Several different ordinances all over. There are some really complex accounts. For one, there's a huge one and. It it wouldn't fit for here, you know? We looked at, uh, how many drafts did I send you? There were three or four, yeah. And we dumbed it up as, you know, in a sense of word. The yeast amount, you know, because I get. Diane's neighbor calling me every couple of years, then I get, you know, down at the. Southern end of the river calling me. I can go to the property owner and say, you know, yeah, you're, you're. You, you know, you're a fire threat, but I have no backing to it.
And I do think, I, there are things that. Grow in the city right away in the alleys that aren't. Really necessarily the homeowner's responsibility, but there's the. The foot in the alley that can be fire hazards that are, should be the responsibility. If Public Works was giving back the ability to clean the alleys like we are in our ordinance. And be able to clean the right way and then lead it up to the homeowner to clean their property. I think we could expedite this, do a revision. And we can have something for next council, just we're not sitting here telling the party to bait and stuff that's math based when we already have an ordinance says. The city Public Works can clean the right way. We have the ability to enforce what is in the right way. And then it comes down to the fire chief and the main development side. What is on the property that should be cleared for fire mitigation?
I'll be here to press.
Really quick, we've been kind of roundtaming and um, Carter, who's our new city planner. Does want to make a comment. I want to give him an opportunity on. We've just, the whole room's been talking, so go ahead, Carter.
The newest member of the department. Thanks. Um, I wanted to suggest that perhaps to take. Looking at the issue of whether uh, owners are required to maintain the right of way all the way to the center line. Whether there could be some language in there that says up until the driving aisle. Or up until the edge of asphalt. Or it could be driving aisle as determined by the streets department or Public Works. Because then if there's an alley that there's no driving aisle there, that would make sense. To have the. Owner um, do some mitigation twelve feet into the alley where it's the center. But if, I don't think it makes sense to require a homeowner to go out into the driving aisle where there's asphalt and. Clean weeds in the asphalt, but if it's uh, up until the asphalt.
Yeah, or edge of improved surface.
So I kind of echo what our uh, Public Works director said is it sounds like we've got um. Some direction um, for revision on uh, how council would like to see this brought up. And uh, it it doesn't sat- satisfy what council um, would like to see at this time. So is there any other staff questions for clarification on how to bring it back or any other comments from council we'd like to make uh, to give direct further direction of?
I I agree with with Chris and I think the deficit in duty to remove is that we lumped. All of the duty to remove on private residence and to your point. Uh, and I didn't mean it like that. I meant to your point. Uh, it is the streets, it is the, you know, the agreed upon, as you've noted, already empowered to do these things. And the, so the duty to remove should be, this is the duty you remove. It doesn't mean we all can't work together and you can't give a shout out and say, hey, can you guys get this? Craft or your tree is stained or whatever, but yeah, look in private duty to remove.
Wednesday is a good example, but you gotta call on, I want to say. Third oak, um, there's a set, there's a a very nice grove of um. Beech nut trees or whatever trees they are, but giant one fell down. It was the size of the council table. Um, this property owner said, well, this is the city tree. It's within forty feet from the center of. The the center of the city line, or the center of the street. I measured it out. It was at thirty two feet, so it was our responsibility. I have no problem. Going to the property line. Everything else is in the right way. That is the city responsibility. I will put my crews out there and we will clean that up. But I need the flexibility to say, this pile of tires that's been sitting here for five years. Needs to come out of the city right of way, not just the fire nuisance and the box of timber that we're sitting and weren't building up for the last ten years. I didn't hear support saying, let's, let's pick a line and I say the property line. I will take care of everything from the property line to center line or.
And I think there's part of this. Sorry, was there?
Yeah, no, I I, but you know.
So that language, I feel like, kind of clarifies a little bit of that duty to remove. What I feel like is a big bit of what I'm. Hearing us wavering on, yes, fire hazard. Um, the concept of blight, I know that this is kind of that awkward. You know, part of this that we're not talking about, but um, fire hazard versus. You know, understanding we live in a community where there are a lot of. Dirt piles and junk piles and weed piles and all of that. And so. Is that something that the council is interested in, you know, for showing in terms of ordinance? Or is it just strictly, we're talking about fire hazard? Because what Chris is talking about is. Piles of tires, piles of, you know.
But he's defining his need to be able to act within the public right of way, so I. But but yes, and I to Tom's point, I would like to see this be specific. It's a short, two page thing. And I think that some of our, he should be focusing on, yes, the specificity. I think it is, it is far too broad. We properly established duty to remove and we support the the fire needs right now, you know. Too sweet.
And it just clarifies specificity. What are you seeking in terms of the specificity?
Well, I think that I I don't know how you rubbish visual blight and all of that, how that is evaluated for fire concerns.
This might be a bigger issue for general. There might be other nuisances that you can. I think if we want to limit this scope to fire hazardous material.
Well, so do I. That's why we asked.
There might be another discussion we're going to consider.
Nuisance. So without getting clarification, nuisance is being pulled out. The recommendation, council's that nuisance comes out, fire hazard is the center.
Yes, I was trying to ask Greg if he had the terminology.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and wrap up.
I just.
In section one, we have tightened up to focus on dry vegetation weed fire hazard.
Okay.
Section two, limit the responsibility to private property. Um, and where needed, match up with the intended, but section one to be specific to fire hazard. That cover.
As I know, you talked about three, four, three, three. Where, which part? I'm sorry. Which part did you just?
Move one of the definition two.
Four, three, one and four, three, two. Okay, well, um, four, three, three.
Four, three, three. It also looks like there's some.
Yeah.
Rubbish and visual blight language that needs to be clicked. Generally match the language.
So can I also ask, recorded as a lien, has the city found that we're, we're running up against the? You know, so many outlaws that we really need to.
No.
You know?
But.
So do we need that there or?
Because I was already going to prosecute him and I could pay him to court. I'm in jail for six months.
No, I'm just asking.
Six, six and L is a good uh, um, example. There are four or five at least um. Just dead pine trees and one fell down onto Sixth Street last winter. Uh, we've asked the landowner to remove them now. I have a uh, um, tree cutting service. I think I was estimated forty five hundred dollars. I think it is now, I will give him one more chance and I will show him the cost estimate that if he wants to remove them. He can't, or we're gonna have it removed. So we have the safe uh, safe walks to school. And those trees come down because it is a fire hazard. It is a health hazard to kids and they can all fall into the roadway. And so I will send him, or we put a lien on his property so we can get reimbursed for it.
That, and I appreciate the example and I have no doubt that there are multiple times you face that disorder. Um, but then it, what other, so and I won't disagree that there does need to be some, you know, and enforceable. Without having to have Rick run around and chase their ground.
Well, we could put a provision in there that says we can usually. People usually clean up their stuff before it gets to.
Well, some sort of process.
Gets to the sentencing stage. They usually, they usually get it right.
Well, so could there at least be some mechanism that's more visible so that, that? I just, you know, I think we know, not a lot of people attend these meetings, not a lot of people are tuned in and a lot of people miss things, whether you mail them or not. And I think that part of this, whenever we're talking about recording a lien or. Um, something like this, that that there should be more than ten days and that there should be another step, which is, you know, you get one chance at a. I don't know, city council hearing or something.
You know, if we, if we can find the property owner immediately, we find them, we talk to them immediately. A lot of the times, you know, it can't. Uh, but so we said certified mail is the best tool we have, obviously, to make sure that our communication or base reach to them.
We also, we also have the levels of code enforcement that are in place currently with the the three level isolation.
I would suggest uh, this probably is also a general decision that. That way. And and sometimes it's a lot quicker and it's not a lien and you just sort of have to work it out with the person. It's a, for prosecution or something, get your, get your stuff cleaned up.
And usually the misdemeanor word kind of gets people's attention.
When this is just out of control. Grasses, whatever brush, not junk. We have a junk ordinance in place right there. Um, that is different, you know, and it has to show me. That, you know, if your neighbor isn't threatening your well-being. I'm not, you know, I don't have ten letters already written. And gonna send them out tomorrow. It's just like if your neighbor burns in his backyard. He can burn. Today can't burn, but normally he can, but if above you, I go ask them. To put it out and if they don't, they can be prosecuted. Um, because it's a nuisance, just like my neighbor's dog barking. You know, so we're not trying, we're, we're just trying to get a little more.
I agree, I'm trying.
You're not just gonna get prosecuted, you have to have the officer paid first. That's, the nuisance isn't creating it, it's letting it.
Let's get out of the nuisance.
Everything that we've done the last six months that I've been here is, we've ran out the ordinance. I'll go knock on the door, try to talk with the the homeowner or the renter. Figure out who the property owner is. It's not like, well, ten days later, we're burning down their house. We are giving them an opportunity multiple times. Um, we're not, we're not after the citizens. We just want to take care of the city. And give them the best opportunity to take care of their property. If they need assistance, we're there to assist them.
Sounds great. I feel like to wrap this up, the focus is on safety, the focus is, you know, on uh, emergency preparedness. That's a cap. Again, going back to why this was in the fire chief's work plan and then why it's coming to council, um, staff has direction and so I think. The appropriate thing to do would be to continue, since it's an action, to continue this.
Yes, you would have just, you're gonna put it out publicly.
I'm not public, okay.
Okay, can I ask you though? I mean, I under, I I mean, I think there's value and I understand that the three readings is so we can get through things. Is it reasonable to consider this, the first reading and the second reading brings the um, amended? Things for evaluation? I mean, is there a reason it can't be a process?
It can be processed. You, you always have the right to not wait the third readings. It's.
You know, I'm saying for the, in this case, could this, our experience right now, knowing that we're after a fire.
Without having the appropriate.
Full, yeah, alright, so you have to read it.
Because you have to do a process and sometimes you saw this out, there is some valley to touching something free to.
Well, no, I meant to actually start now and but you're saying that it can't start now.
Treating, that has to be one reading.
When it's brought back.
For the proper language.
If that's, if that's the appropriate language, okay. Okay, um, well, before we wrap up, again, I just wanted to introduce Carter. Um, I'm glad I got to speak, but newest member.
What did I heard?
Oh, sorry.
Don't worry about it.
No, we don't need a motion to continue. Um, because it's not public hearing, thank you for that, so we're just gonna, we've advised. Go ahead, give a motion to table.
I. Twenty twenty five, that's now, sorry. I, I, all in favor?
Yeah.
I, thank you. I apologize, Shelley.
I asked her today. I got the E, the read option of fiscal year twenty six tentative budget. Um, Shelley included her memo. Um, she's here to discuss it and then stand fresh and go ahead, Shelley.
Okay, I'm gonna give you the brief rundown of why, why we're doing this. Um, basically, there was. The Idaho power of Easta lawsuit where we all had to pay taxes back to them. And the county took those taxes out of what they paid us. And then we had to make a separate interest payment, so that total money that we were at was two thousand one hundred and twenty six dollars and twenty eight cents. In order to get that money back. Um, I need to include that amount of money in our real property tax line. So in the tentative budget that you adopted um, at the last meeting. I failed to include that. It was my fault. I missed that. So what this does is just revise. The city property tax, which was eight hundred eighty seven thousand, to now be eight hundred and eighty nine thousand, one hundred and twenty six dollars and twenty six cents. Or whatever it is, twenty eight cents. And then to balance that, reduce the carryover from one hundred and seventy eight thousand, five hundred thirty seven dollars. To one seventy six, four eleven. No bottom line changed. No bottom line changed, none of that, it was just because it involved tax money and I have to publish that we are claiming this money back. I needed to change those two line items. So all I'm asking is just to redo the, your approval on the tentative budget. Did that make sense?
Yes.
It's about, so that's, that's all I'm asking.
Either approved or.
Somebody needs to move to adopt the tentative, like in my memo.
I moved to have the tentative budget for FY twenty twenty-six as I moved to approve of this. Moved to approve the tentative budget for FY twenty twenty-six.
Check it.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember President Shay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
All right, sorry, introduce you now. At this time, I take a motion for adjournment.
I moved to.
Welcome to our world.
All in favor? Thank you very much.